So far.
Some of the score people have been in town taking pictures of Jeff's stuff.
I heard that.
Although Steve Sutter called and said he's all for it beyond.
A bunch of people have been in touch to say they are.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Excellent. We'll see.
Yeah. Just thinking about the bid, you know?
Yeah.
It just seems like I.
Thing I'd like to point out is that public comment will not be solicited during the interview process, but comments can be made during item four D appointment of vacant city councils. There we go. Just talk from right there so you can make sure everybody can hear you. Get the microphone pretty close to you.
A little closer, Dan. Can you hear me?
That's so good.
Yeah, go. A little closer, Dan.
Hello?
There you go. So let's bring it a little closer to you for us, please.
Perfect.
If you could state your name and your resident address and your intent.
Dan Doyle, Dan Doyle, 129 Cypress Court.
So I would offer either one of you on the left to ask me a question and then we'll just carry on down. Anna, are you ready to ask a question, Mr. Doyle?
Um, well, I don't know. I don't know if you're ever gonna take a minute. Yeah, I've been thinking about my question and my question is, if I didn't know you, Dan, what would you want to tell me about yourself vis-à-vis city government?
Oh, wow, that's a good question.
Yeah, fun, right?
You know, I was on, when Wesley Dahlhoff was the mayor, I was on the, whatever it was called, the design advisory, whenever Jim was on and some other people too. And it was actually a good experience. I enjoyed that. And, you know, I'm just kind of into preserving the community. You know, I like the historic district, stuff like that. Steve Olaf and I did at that time, we actually tried to put a book together, you know, like the Sea Ranch book, you know, these are the design elements that you want to use in the historic district. But we never, never came to fruition, but Steve started giving architectural tours. So that was good. I just like to say in the community, I lived here, I lived in the community. I never lived in town until I moved back. So, but I hung out up here with my friends.
Thank you, Dan.
Do you like to get real close to the mic?
I'd like to ask you, what makes Point Arena attractive to you? What was attractive about Point Arena?
Well, I was, I was on the East Coast. I was actually in Florida by West Palm Beach. And the, I was going through a divorce and the pandemic hit. So I'm all by myself, watching way too much cable TV, you know, and I'm totally frightened, you know, it's hard to get up the, you know, food spot, to go into the grocery store and all this. And I was like, well, where do I want to move? The house was for sale I was in. And I was like, I know where to move, you know, where there's lots of fresh air and space. And I gotta tell you, I drive up and down the coast a lot. I mean, to me, this is like living in a national park or something. I mean, there's so much open space. I mean, I just feel special. I had a friend who came from the East Coast. He was like, you know, if I was gonna live out west, he's like, this is where I would live. I mean, it's truly a really beautiful space we live in. I mean, I live, you know, across the street and here's the Stornetta, you know, White House. So I actually walk, I walk out there almost every day.
Okay, Dan, I've known you for some time. And like you said, I was aware that you were on once before with the planning or design review, Barbara pointed out. By taking a seat on the council here, you know, it's pretty easy to see that we meet typically once a month. Are you, this is a multi-part question. Are you prepared to do what's necessary to come here and be knowledgeable and speak to the items that are on the agenda? One. And two, would you be willing to accept commissions and assignments that may take you out of the area? Say the furthest would be Ucaia on a regular basis if hybrid was no longer available, hybrid meeting models. So the questions are, you know, are you willing to put in the time? And are you willing to take on those assignments that we all take on to make this, you know, an excellent local government?
No, I'm ready to dig in, you know, I did, I was a professional in my career. So I'm ready to do the work. The only thing I would say about being on a commission out of the area, I don't drive at night. So I have to be, I'd have to be able to get home or have a driver. Otherwise, I'd be okay with that.
That's good for me.
Well, I imagine initially you'll be getting your, you know, your sense of what the, what the job's about. But as far as an item or two that you might feel would be valuable as a goal for yourself or for the community that you would be willing to work on or interested in working on?
You know, I'm not really up to speed on those, what's, you know, what your agenda is. I mean, I did read the agenda and stuff, but, you know, I need to kind of, you know, get my sea legs or whatever you want to say here. And then I, you know, then I'll give you my input, but I'm not gonna jump in and, you know, assume I know all this stuff and the background. I mean, there's a lot of history, I'm sure, with a lot of these things. So once I get up to speed, for sure, I'm not shy.
Fair, fair enough.
Richie.
Hi, Dan.
Hi, Richie.
I'm gonna ask one of the questions that was suggested, but we got suggestions from Fort Rag and there are some very good questions, very good questions from there. When making decisions, how do you determine what is in the best interest of the city?
Well, you know, when I was on the design commission or whatever that was, you know, that was more, you know, it was about keeping the city beautiful, kind of, and not making any mistakes in terms of, because whatever you do, I mean, even if you're doing the park, I know there's a skateboard park on the agenda tonight, you know, it just has to look good. I'm, you know, that was my career, you know? I would tell my kids, we'd like, Dad, what are you doing? I was like, oh, I make people's houses look good, you know? So, you know, that's my main thing and to make sure that the community works together, you know, not, you know, divide the community, kind of get everybody on the same page. I know that's not completely possible, but it's something to strive for.
Thank you.
This is the time that you have an opportunity to provide us with anything you feel we should know before we ask you more. Would you like to, do you have anything?
I didn't prepare a statement or anything, no. I, you know, I haven't really attended, I mean, I Zoomed some of the city council meetings, but, you know, they were like putting me to sleep, so.
That's definitely what we wanted to hear.
And now I know, that's gonna be the challenge, you know, I had some tea right before I came in.
Well, the other council members will make sure you don't fall asleep.
Anyone else have an optional question they'd like to add or ask at this time?
Well, I do. You used to be on the design review committee and you don't have that anymore. And you're interested in preserving the unique nature of Point Arena's look. How would you facilitate that as a city council member? See, now we don't have a design review committee anymore.
I don't, you know, see, this is where I'm not really up to speed. Before, the plans were submitted to the city. Now, I guess the plans don't go to the city anymore. I'm not sure, do they? Well, I would, you know, kind of how I would approach it, you know, was give like a design critique, like, you know, whatever, you know, this elevation needs some work or something like that. But, you know, it's, that's kind of my main interest is, you know, design elements in the city. You know, and what the development is. I'm not against development, I just don't, I think it should be good development, you know?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Council, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask through the dials staff? Dan, I want to thank you very much. We understand that it's advertised as one position and we have two candidates, which is kind of unprecedented for us, but I'm hoping you'll stay here and give what our decision is.
Yes, I will.
Thank you, Dan.
My screen.
So, you can check your mic, we're going right into the next one. Like to hear, invite Jeff Hanson. You mean Jeff? If you can just state your name for the record and then your place of residence for us and your intent for being here tonight.
My name is Jeff Hanson. I live at 152 Main Street here in Point Arena.
A little closer.
I'm here to throw my hat in for the vacant city council.
Okay, so who would like to start?
Well, I would.
Can you come closer to the mic?
I would just like to ask you about the same question as Dan. What brought you to Point Arena? What made you come to here? Was it just the city council?
Well, I'm here because Laura and I wanted to live on the coast. And for a few years, we went from Santa Cruz all the way up toward the coast. And we came through town here actually on one trip and and I actually didn't even notice that the seashell was for sale. And we went back home and started looking more intently and we loved it here. We loved the scenery. We started investigating, you know, the area and it was right after Obama declared the Stornetta side. And we were both big, you know, hard Obama fans. It just seemed like a good fit and went through the process of purchasing it through the receivership, which took many, many months, many trips out here, once a month for the court hearings and all of those things, which just really reinforced our desire to be here.
So you can guess my question. If I didn't know you, what would you want me to know about you vis-à-vis city government?
Well, this is the last place I ever thought I would be.
Where is the last place you ever might be?
Sitting here, sitting here.
Being interviewed?
Being interviewed to be on the city council. I, it's, the whole thing is a little actually surreal. I mean, when I think about eight years ago, I was driving around almost, you know, total anonymity, working out of my truck with a crew of guys. And here I am, and people make comments and say stuff to me that I've never seen in my life and nobody, my name, and I'm really just, you know, I've always worked in construction. I'm a passionate architecture fan. I have a deep interest in architecture. I have three adult children. I have essentially a very storybook, almost vanilla childhood. Incredible parents encouraged us at every turn. My brothers and I taught us how to, how to work. And I don't know, does that cover it?
That covers a lot. But I'm also interested in knowing your interest in city government.
Well, you guys, I mean, just about everyone here knows that pre-pandemic, I don't think I missed one meeting in five or six years. So I sat here and I've admired what everybody does here and the sacrifice that all of you make to be here and caring about being here. And, you know, this, this town has, it's been, it's been a real struggle for myself and Laura and my, and members of my family. But it's also afforded many opportunities. And I feel that, you know, with the vacant seat and everything, I just felt like it was time to try to get back a little bit. Ironically, with the agenda tonight, I really, really would like to help build the state park.
So I hope you had a chance to think about it. My question to the candidates tonight are, as you alluded to in your earlier comments, there's a lot of prep and there's a lot of communication. We just don't show up here. We work a lot with the city. We go around to different entities and talk with them. We come and talk to you. What I want to know is, are you, I know you're a busy guy. I know you're both busy people. Are you willing to put in the time it takes to get prepared so you can come in knowledgeably and govern knowledgeably fairly and openly? That's one part. And the other part is, there's, there's other assignments besides just here. And I think sometimes the publicness is out on that. There's commissions that are over in Ucaia. There's commissions that are in Simona County, if it's our turn, if it's the city's turn to sit on that. Some of the commissions are county, some of the commissions are state. Are you prepared to pick up the assignments that you hopefully will be interested in? And are you able to participate in those extra city curricular activities?
Absolutely.
You know, the thought that, that I have is, is we have had most council contests that have gone uncontested. And usually, you know, if we have, if we have volunteers to come and, and to present themselves to have a council seat, it's not an unusual thing that they're going to want in. But yeah, any thoughts on how to engage the community, not just in, in, you know, running for council, but to participate in committees and to come and share, share thoughts and to not just drop stuff. What I'm happy about is to truly engage and help improve and improve the community here.
Well, I feel that I'm approachable, my door's open. Anybody's welcome to come talk to me at any time about anything. I, I do think that it would be nice to try to have less contention, you know, with different things, but time goes on and we all work towards common goals, I think, I think all of that's obtainable.
Richie.
Hey, Jeff.
Richie.
Jeff, well, first off, just for the record, Jeff is my employer, has been for quite a part of four years. I will not be voting on the candidate, but I am, do have the privilege of being able to be part of the interview. My question would be, what is your vision for Point Arena?
Well, I don't, I don't know if I have a vision. I mean, I, I think this is a beautiful town and and I think that, I mean, what I want to do is get my, you know, project done, get my doors open. And, you know, like I've always said, run, run the motel, try to be a good neighbor. Different opportunities have been presented to me in the last few years. And if they made sense, I worked hard and to try to, to try to pursue them also. And I don't, you know, I don't know what tomorrow's gonna bring and none of us do. And, and I think that this is a beautiful, scrappy place. And all of us choose to live here for one reason or another. And it's not an easy place to live. And I don't, I don't think, I don't think I have an actual vision other than to try to take my, my buildings and redo them and with thought and integrity to the design of what they are.
I could just follow up. Maybe I didn't make the question quite clear enough. I was referring mainly to, what is your vision for this, the city as a council member? If you're so close.
I, I think that I want to be here and participate and be engaging and listen to what, you know, people have to say. It's not what I want for the city. I'm, I'm here to try to give back and listen and move forward as a, as a group, as a community.
This is the time you have to tell us something that you were expecting the answer to, but didn't get, actually get asked that anyone wants to know about.
Well, I was kind of expecting your question of, of if you could have lunch or meet anyone you wanted to meet. Who would that be? I can't, I can't narrow that out to one person. So it's us. I was kind of expecting that.
Any other questions from the left? Any other questions from the right? What about from the council? Do you have anything you want to ask through the dials staff? Jeff, I want to thank you very much for being in the odd seat to leave mine. And returning to the audience, you will probably be taking a five-minute recess and get into our judgment session. Thanks for being here. Is it okay if we stand in recess until you start the next meeting? A little? Have you got chat logs, okay, or is it?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the regular session. Actually, is this a regular session? I think it's on the 13th, it's not a day for us, but this is the December 13th, 2022 edition of the Point Arena City Council Regular Session starting at 6:00 PM. And if you were tuned in earlier, you'll know that we have a special session at 5:30 to interview the applicants for the vacant city council seat that was conducted. And then we have a five-minute recess and now we're back here. With that, I'd like to get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Wasserman. Councilmember Kugel.
Here.
Councilmember Dobbins. Vice Mayor Berkey. Mayor Ignacio.
Here, but not all there.
Also in attendance are city manager Paul Anderson, city attorney Ginny Chandler, LCP update consultant Linda Roofing, city planner Scott Perkins and myself, deputy city clerk Gina Jibas.
Thank you very much for that. Tonight, item two will be the reading by poet laureate Blake Moore and the Mendocino County youth poet laureate Sidney Regalbergy. Take it away, poets.
All right, you want me to go first, Sid? Go first. Okay, so I wrote this poem for, "We're in the Darkening Days." There's a little solstice poem for everyone called "Winter Solace." "If winter solstice could be a vegetable, it would be a candy cane beet, deep, burrowing ornament with inside stripes, sweet stewing in a bed of chilled soil. It would be swished and washed, swirled down to the far meadows of darkness with hot peppermint cocoa, dark and spicy beneath peaks of white froth. It would ride a horse-drawn carriage down a tree-sheltered path, narrow and straight into the longest night ever, wearing a cashmere wassail coat, midnight blue with yellow star silk circled around the shoulders. Nothing underneath but spells, potions, prayers, anything to soften the cold floors of the ebony-shadowed months to come. It would clop, clop, clop along to the scamper music of mice waltzing through leftovers, the Cheshire-mused cat looking on, too well-feasted and glassy-eyed from lapping up milk and turkey to stage the great chase. In it all, we sit by as the tilt chases the sun all the way around, surfing and sunning down under that other solstice, six months away from winter, walking along a chilly ocean. This half of planet makes hearthfires, wears cozy sweaters, sips thick soup, finds solace in the promise of Ray's return." Thank you.
Wow, wow, wow.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Blake.
Happy solstice coming. I love the dark night. I love how dark it is all the time and really enjoying the late, late nights of darkness.
Really do lately. Okay, Sidney, we're having a conversation before the meeting. Is it Regal Brugie? How, will you pronounce your last name for me and say hello?
Regal Brugie, Sidney Regal Brugie.
Thank you. The floor's all yours, Sidney.
Okay, I'm happy to be here again. And this is a poem I wrote the other night. It's called Amateur Photographer. "I believe memories cannot be contained by one singular person, that they materialize over the entire existence of time. In fact, memories are ruined by live pictures taken on our smartphones. I don't truly want to recall the sound of his exact laugh from the moment he moved his eyes from the road, but instead, my recollection of the sweet boy that existed. Memories tend to float. They come ever so often, triggered by a scent or a moment of life. I believe Polaroids are the only picture that truly captures memories. A frozen time, flash went off and that was it. Time suspended in the air, time suspended in life. And not one singular person has that same moment as another. This is what memories are. So when I say I do not remove my memories or let them be tainted by later analyzing..." So when I say I do not remove my memories or let them be tainted by later analyzation, I truly mean it. My memories are my memories, shaped by the moments that stopped in time. One, I'm six years old and I ride headfirst into the gate. I don't know how it looked, but I remember how the goose egg felt. Two, my uncle carrying me upon his shoulders, the last time I would ever see him, or the subsequent sweeter memories. Three, riding the Ferris wheel with my best friend while it paused on top, completely suspended in time, in the air, and for once, everything seems so clear. Four, the time my father read my birthday poem to me and I truly realized adulthood was coming too fast. Five, my mother and I are watching Grease in the old apartment, the smell of it so indescribable, I can almost taste it. Six, the time I danced in the fog with the innocence of young love. I don't revisit fresh memories, but I recall the way the cold overturned my spool and the life stopped momentarily, so still I could count the intake of our combined breaths. Seven, a moment capturing my grandfather's smiling at me, suspended laugh, yet if you were to look at the photo, no sound could be heard, but I can hear it ringing in my ears. Who's to say these memories are akin to the ones I shared it with? If nothing else in this world can ever be owned, our memories can be. Click, flash, another moment suspended indefinitely in time.
Wow, wow, thank you.
That was wonderful, Sidney. Thank you. You played.
So it's great to have you both here and we appreciate you at this meeting of, you know, hopefully inauguration of a new political season. Is there a time that we can expect to see you before 12 months from now? Would you like to come back, say in three months or six months and visit us again?
Sure. Yeah, just ask. We'll, we'll come back.
We'll demand.
Thank you. Thanks for asking us.
Thank you. Folks, we're on to item three, approval of the agenda. Council, you had an opportunity to see the agenda and look at the packets. Is there any edits that we'd like to make? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Wasserman. Thank you, Vice Mayor Berkey for the second. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there anybody from the audience that has a question about the agenda? If so, use the raised hand feature or the star nine feature up here. I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time, so I'll call for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wasserman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Mayor Ignacio. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item four, city council reorganization. Resolution number 2022-34, reciting the facts of the regular general municipal election of November 8th, 2022, declaring the result that Barbara Berkey and Anna Dobbins were duly elected to the Point Arena City Council. Anything from staff?
Sure. So as you know, the election was held on November 8th. We had three seats up for election at the end of the nomination period. Barbara Berkey and Anna Dobbins had filed for election. The election was held and Barbara Berkey and Anna Dobbins were returned to the city council. Adoption of this resolution will accept the certification of the campus of returns by the registrar voters and declare the final election results.
Are there any comments from the dials before I go to the public? Not seeing any. If there's any questions from the public on the results, please use the raised hand feature and prepare to be recognized. Not seeing or any raised hands on this item, so I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 2022-34 as previously read.
Seconded.
I will take that motion from Vice Mayor Berkey and seconded from Councilmember Kugel. Still not seeing any raised hand on the motion on the floor. With that, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Wasserman.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins. Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Mayor Ignacio.
All right. Richie, you want to explain to the audience?
Say goodbye.
Oh.
Say a few words.
I'm just gonna.
Come on, after break.
Well, I just suppose I, I want to thank the citizens of Point Arena and the surrounding areas, all of which influence our fine city, for allowing me to serve you all these years, in particular, these last four years or so with this council, which I've said before is the, I think, the most productive and best council that I've ever served with. I want to thank the council itself, all members, and I cannot even state my appreciation for all the help I can.
Thank you, Richie. You'll be missed. Richie. If the council indulged me, I have something prepared I'd like to read as well. Wrote a letter on December 11th to, well, I'll just read it. Dear councilmembers and residents of Point Arena, as most of you know, my employment, employment has taken me in a different direction in recent months. As a result, I find that I'm no longer able to properly carry out the duties that are required to be mayor of this charming little city. As I love and care for all the wonderful residents, business owners, property owners, and all of Point Arena and surrounding community, I believe that I have put forth earnest effort to ensure Point Arena remains a proud and economically developing municipality here on the southern coastal region of Mendocino County. I want to express my deep gratitude to the people of Point Arena who elected me to this council and for entrusting me with the duties that are required to be a council member. Additionally, I'm grateful to my fellow council members for allowing me to serve as mayor for these last three terms. Further, I'd like to thank city staff of past and present who have helped me and helped this city in this, be this fabulous jewel of the South Coast that it truly is. To my understanding, we have two applicants for one vacancy on the council. My advice is, if they qualify, let them both be on council. I've enjoyed our time together in local government since 2015 and I appreciate each and every one of you. Together, we have demonstrated to the people that we can respect the community's wishes, spend the city taxes responsibly, and govern wisely. Our city is strong. Our community makes us stronger. I ask that all of you will support the new mayor, whomever it may be, as well as the rest of the newer council and city staff, as you have always done. Therefore, it is with deepest respect that I intend to resign my position as council member of the city of Point Arena effective tonight. And thank you very much. And if there's no objection, I would like to turn the dials over to the Vice Mayor this time.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you for your years and years of amazing service. I've always told you, it's out of information and historical detail. That's going to be diary missed and I hope you can follow me for advice at different moments.
Anytime.
You'll have time for us.
I think everybody that's on Zoom tonight has my phone number somewhere tucked away for one reason or another, hopefully the good reasons, but yes, absolutely. I'm here to help however I can. Thank you very much. It's been an honor.
Thank you, Scott.
Well, I'm sure that was a surprise to many. Scott will be sorely missed, but like he said, he's always available, which is very reassuring. So let's move on to item four B, which is appointment to make the city council seats. That's plural now. My first seat to come up for appointment is Richie Wasserman. I'd like to point out that this is a four year seat. Because the mayor is leaving in the middle of his term, his seat will be a two year seat. So with that in mind, I'd like to ask for a motion to appoint one of our candidates to this four year seat. Anybody?
I'd like to move that we appoint Jeff Hanson for the four year seat.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Add some motion for Anna Dobbins and a second from Councilwoman Kugel. I guess we're going to vote. Other comment first. Would anybody like to comment on the appointment? I'd like to point out that we do have a one minute time limit because we're really pressed for time tonight. Lonnie Bauer.
Hi, I'm Lonnie Bauer and I live in Point Arena and I just have concerns about appointing Jeff because he owns like half the town and it just seems like a huge conflict of interest to me.
Thank you, Lonnie. I'll just point out that anybody who's involved in a project in Point Arena cannot vote on any of it, so there'll be a lot of recusals if Jeff is appointed. Mr. White, Tom White.
Yes, Tom White on Bluff Top Road. Well, in the forty years I've been in Point Arena, many businesses have closed and the town has gone through some cycles of economic growth with new businesses and also multiple closures. I think both of the candidates are very qualified for the city council. But especially, I think Jeff Hanson is contributing greatly to the economy and the appearance of Point Arena when you enter town, both in the new Wildflower Motel and ongoing repair to the derelict motel across the street, so I support his candidacy.
Thank you, Mr. White. Would anybody else like to comment before we go to a vote? That would be Isabel. I'm having trouble reading your last name. If you could state your name, please.
Hi, Isabel Cunningham. Can you hear me? Um, I just want to second Lonnie's comment that I feel like there's a huge conflict in interest and I would personally not support having him on council, especially if he's going to have to recuse himself a lot. It seems counterproductive.
Thank you, Isabel. Any other comments?
I'll just make one comment. We did receive a call from Steve Sutter, fellow here today, in support of Jeff Hanson's candidacy as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is your moment. Okay, I'm going to go to a roll call vote. Lonnie and Isabel, so you still have your hands up? Did you want to say anything?
I, I had one more thing to say and that was just, I still feel like it's a conflict of interest, even though he's recused himself as he's evicted multiple people in Point Arena, multiple families and residents. I just, it concerns me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, last call. Anyone else? All right, we're going to go to a roll call vote. Gina?
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins. Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Declare, and now I'm going to declare that there is a second vacancy to fill. It is a two year vacancy. Are we ready to fight tonight?
Sure.
Dana, yes, yes. Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to to appoint Dan Doyle for the two year appointment.
A second? Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Kugel and a second from Councilmember Dobbins. I'm going to open this up for public comment. Would anybody like to make a comment? Mr. White, you have your hand up?
Yes, I also support, support Mr. Doyle's membership on the council. He has a history of working on the council with city planning and many contributions to the community and I think he'll be an excellent member of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Anyone else? Okay, staff, any comment?
No.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to a roll call vote for this seat as well. Gina?
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins. And Vice Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations, gentlemen. We're going to go to item four C, which is administering the oath of office. We'll be administering the oath to the four of us at once, so.
If the new council members want to take the dials, that'd be great.
Yeah, come up and take your seat.
Barbara did the big seat.
Sorry, I get the big seat. Well, I got to tell you, this seat is really low, so if you want to like have your chin on the table, take this one. It doesn't look like it. It probably does.
All right. Yeah, remember those days.
Should he stand?
Yes.
We don't have to.
Everyone else is electoral.
You're not getting oaths, so.
Yeah, you can speak anyways.
Your name, Bruce Lowes, is your oath of office.
I.
I. Barbara Berkey.
Dan Doyle.
Anna Dobbins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Today, will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
And the municipal code of the city of California.
And the municipal code of the state.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
Now I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which.
The duties upon which.
I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
In the capacity of city council member for the city of Point Arena.
In the capacity of city council member for the city of Point Arena.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Wow, oath of office. Serious business, right? I don't know.
What we're doing.
Listen to those words. Listen to the heart, right? I think so, yeah.
All is, all is going to be good. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Scott.
Scott, here we go. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Are we ready to move on? We still have four items under four and that is four. Selection of mayor and vice mayor for the term of 2023, 2024. So I would request a motion for mayor. If there's no discussion, would anyone like to? There's no discussion with anyone like a matter of about the Mayor's seat? No discussion? I'd like to make a motion. Okay, Anna? I'd like to move that we appoint Barbara Birkey as Mayor this week. Anna, can I get a second?
Anna, I'd like to second that.
Thank you, Jim. Any discussion? Do we take public comment? Okay, any public comment? Just raise your hand. Yes, Scott?
Scott Agostio, two ten School Street. I think you are the perfect nominee for this position. Your experience and watching you over the past few years, makes me very comfortable as a resident that you have the city's interest at heart. You know how to play hardball and you know how to run a good meeting. So I wish you well.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you.
I would also, I would like to echo those comments by Scott. I've had the privilege to work with Barbara on a few projects, also traveling to various, to a couple of conferences, where I learned so much more as a result of being with Barbara, who seems to understand things a little better than I do. And I benefit from those. And she'll be a great mayor and it's a great council. Thank you.
Thank you, Richie. Thank you, Richie. Okay, any other discussion? All right, let's go to a vote. Gina?
Councilmember Doyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Birkey.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. I'm really looking forward to doing this. I know I'm gonna have great guidance and I'm gonna really work at listening. Okay, thank you so much. Now we're gonna move on to our Vice Mayor position. And I would like to, now if there's any discussion, anybody would like to have a comment about who might be appropriate for Vice Mayor? If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to nominate Anna as Vice Mayor.
Oh, a second now.
I'll throw that.
All right, any discussion or comment from the public?
Any here from Anna on the nomination?
She has to. Then I guess it's a done deal. Thank you, Barbara. Thank you very much. And I will accept that duty with all my heart. Thank you. Thank you, Anna. Okay, let's go to a vote. Oh, there's a comment from the public. Richie Wasserman.
Well, Anna kind of preempted my comment because I wanted to remind the council and those who are listening that Anna Dobbins has been the heart of this council and one could argue of this town for many years. And it's very appropriate that she take this seat.
That's super nice. Oh, yes.
As a Mayor, Council, I would like to echo what Richie said. I mean, I've been on this council a long time and Anna is not only the heart, but the conscience of balance for everything this town stands for. And I think she would be an excellent, excellent Vice Mayor for this city.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing the hands raised, we'll go to a vote. Gina?
Councilmember Doyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Councilmember Dobbins.
Yes.
Mayor Birkey.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful. All right. Okay, we are ready to roll with our agenda for tonight. First thing is item five, Mayor's Reports and Councilmember Updates. Our first guest is Lieutenant General Sheriff. I see that Lieutenant Comber is here tonight, so would you like to speak?
Yes, good evening, Council, and congratulations to everyone on your new and returning appointments. For Scott, thank you for your service, sir. And it has definitely been a pleasure to be in attendance with you during these meetings.
Well, thank you.
So the sheriff, the sheriff is definitely gonna miss being here this evening. Unfortunately, his presence was required elsewhere, or else he would be here. I guess I'll just roll into our calls for service for the last thirty days. Thirty-two total. The types of calls or the nature of the calls, we had five calls surrounding suspicious circumstances. We had one vandalism, two traffic collisions, including a hit-and-run. We had five disturbance-related calls. We had two coroner-related investigations, one incident of domestic violence, and one call for a DUI or driving under the influence. Out of those calls, we had ten investigative reports taken with two arrests. And so a little bit high on the investigative reports, but definitely no major situations involving high-profile crimes like burglaries or theft-related stuff. And with that, if I could spend another minute here, I want to give you guys some crime prevention tips on scams. If I may, I know that season hasn't seemed to have hit us in the last few months, the last few months, but we're getting a couple here and there. So just four things that you can do to detect a scam. And I'm talking phone scams. And this is straight from the Federal Trade Commission. But number one is scammers will pretend to be from an organization that you know. And that might be like the IRS or the Social Security Administration. But it more frequently that what we experienced in Mendocino County is people calling, representing they're from like the Deputy Sheriff's Association or something. But they're gonna, they're gonna act like you know who they are. Number two is scammers say there is a problem or a prize. So they're either gonna be asking for money because you owe the government money, or maybe you got a warrant. You gotta, you gotta pay, pay money to get that warrant revoked. Or it could be a prize. You won, you know, the lottery. In order to do that, then you need to pay us some money upfront. Number three is scammers will pressure you to act immediately. So basically, as they don't, they don't want you to think about what they're talking about. They're just gonna press you and try to get you rolling and paying them some, something monetary-wise. And then last, number four, is scammers will tell you to pay in a specific way. So think of, you know, how they're asking for money is definitely crucial to identifying you got a scammer. So in most cases, it is gonna be some type of gift card, wiring money. In a lot of the recent cases we're seeing here in Mendocino County is cryptocurrency. So having you paying crypto and because it's cryptocurrency, they really, it's untraceable. So as far as where that transaction took place. And so that would be it for, for just scams. So just be aware of that. If a person wanted to find out more information on this subject of like crime prevention tips, then, I mean, it's easy as going to do an internet search and typing in crime prevention tips. And you can always attach a clued a word for the type or category of really what you want tips on and you'll get some good returns on that. And that is all I have for you. Does anyone have any questions for me?
That's a lot. I know the scams are just going nuts right now. I got one today. Yeah, thanks for the tips and the cautions not to act quickly if on anything anybody asks you for. So the sheriff's report that you gave us, was that for the South Coast or just for Point Arena?
That is strictly for the city of Point Arena.
Sorry, can't hear you.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, that is, those calls for service or those stats are strictly for the city of Point Arena.
Things are heating up downtown. I know I called the sheriff this weekend. So, but thanks for being there. I appreciate everything you do. And.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Lieutenant Comber? Okay. I think council update is Jennifer Smallwood here tonight. Jennifer, do you have anything to update us on? If that's Jennifer Smallwood that I'm seeing, might be a different Jennifer.
No, it's Jennifer Smallwood. And no, we're, we're on a winter break until February, March. But things are going on behind the scenes. There'll be an update soon.
Thank you. Okay. Ad hoc committee reports. We've met, but there's nothing really to report out right now, so I'm not gonna take time with that. Anybody else?
None.
Okay, outside agency and commission reports. For me, same thing. I've gone to a lot of meetings, but there's nothing in particular to report out, except maybe I would mention that the EDFC, which is the Economic Development and Finance Corporation, is looking at new projects that would benefit the community and be economic drivers. And one thing that we're looking at is providing land for farmers that would be low-cost and viable for their exploits. So if you're a budding farmer or wannabe farmer or already established farmer and you're interested in a land project, please get in touch with me. You can do it through City Hall, or you know where I work. I'm always at Bakery. And I would love to tell you what we have in mind. Any other commission matters? Anna or Jim? No? Okay, we're gonna move on. Privilege of the floor. This is our public comment period. Members of the public can speak on anything that is not on our agenda tonight. We'll have a maximum of three minutes. Use the raised hand feature if you'd like to speak. Seeing none. We'll go to the consent calendar, item seven. All matters listed in this category are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one single motion. Tonight, we have approval of city council meeting minutes for November fifteenth, one to. And that's it.
So I'd like to take a motion to approve the consent calendar. Is there one more thing, Ginny?
No, but the only people that can vote on those are the people that were actually here present at those meetings.
Correct.
That would be just the three of you.
Right, so that will be Councilmember Kugel, Councilmember Dobbins, and myself will vote on this item. Thank you for that, Ginny.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
A second? Okay, that's a motion by Councilmember Kugel and a second by Anna Dobbins. Councilmember Dobbins, new Vice Mayor Dobbins, excuse me. All right, can I get a roll call vote, please?
You may. Councilmember Doyle.
Oh, he can't vote because he wasn't here.
Excuse me.
It would just be Councilmember Kugel, myself, and Vice Mayor Dobbins.
Understood. Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dobbins.
Yes.
And Mayor Agost, excuse me, Mayor Birkey.
Yes. Yes, to all of the.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Oh, I didn't include in our consent calendar the master meeting calendar for 2023. So do we have to vote again, Ginny? No, because it's included in the consent calendar. Okay, we do have a new master meeting calendar and it does have the dates for our Fourth of July celebration, also a Harbor Fest. So if you're interested in that, just contact City Hall and get a master meeting calendar. It's never too early to start planning for those events, right? I'm already thinking about it. A, a presentation that's close to my heart, and that would be with the American Ramp Company Skate Park. I met Maddie and her partner, one of her partners, at the League of California Cities Convention. And I was pretty blown away by all the amazing projects they've done in the skate park realm, as well as pump tracks. So they're kind of a one-shot place to go for these amazing projects. And tonight Maddie's gonna talk to you about what American Ramp does.
Yes, thank you so much for the introduction. So I'm Maddie with American Ramp Company. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
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 Excellent. So I sent Paul a presentation. I'm not sure if he's sharing that on his screen or not.
Gina's gonna share that.
Excellent.
Um, yeah, if I could get the enabling. All right.
Okay, you're up.
Awesome. Gina, if you just want to put it in presentation mode, that would be perfect.
Just one moment.
Enable editing, okay.
So if you, there's that little, like the bottom right corner, it's kind of like the tripod image. Yeah, up and down.
Sorry.
No, it's fine. Perfect, this works. Okay, awesome. So I just wanted to introduce our company really quick. As Barbara said, we were able to meet at the League of Cities a few months ago. She just mentioned that there had been some skate park interest from the community in the past. Sounds like the community really came together, had some good momentum, and then things just fizzled out a little bit. So we just kind of talked about what some options were, what our company has been doing all across the country and the world. So just a little bit of background, American Ramp Company, we're actually going into our twenty-fifth year as a company, so it's a big year for us. We were founded by Nate BMO, here in the top right photo. And then our CEO is John Hunter, the bottom right photo. I don't want to go into too much detail, but the main point here is both of our leaders of the company, they are riders and owners. So we like to say we're rider-owned and operated. So everything we do at American Ramp Company comes, we like to think of things as the user, not only the designer and builder, but we use these parks. So we want to design and build parks that we would want to skate. Next slide. Great, so I just wanted to point out a couple of projects in the state of California that we've done here in the past couple of years. As Barbara mentioned, not only do we design and build skate parks, but we do bike parks and pump tracks. So the top left photo, this is it to Hatchapi. This is an above-ground skate park that we did for the city. The top right photo is down in Paris, and this is an all-concrete skate park that we did. And you can kind of see that the bowl is shaped like an owl, so it fits in with the theme of the park. So that was really fun. Kind of in the back half of that photo, it's kind of looks like dirt. It's hard to see, but that's actually a bike park that we did in conjunction with the skate park. So if you're ever down in Paris, it's Enchanted Hills, so they have a skate park and bike park. The bottom left photo is in Sacramento, California. The bottom left photo is in Sacramento, California. So this was a bicycle playground that we did for the city, which is really targeted towards little kids aged two to 12. But I like to ride the bicycle playground, so adults can use them as well. And then the bottom right photo, this is the first pump track that we did for the city of Temecula. So this is an all asphalt pump track. It's our Velo Solutions brand. Since we built this first track about three years ago, we've actually gone back and done three more tracks for the city because they've been so popular, they've needed more to keep up with the demand. And feel free during this whole presentation, if you have questions, just shout them out and I'd be happy to answer them. Any questions so far in any of these photos or anything?
What's geographically, what's the closest project of yours that we might be able to go and check out?
Yeah, I would say Sacramento is probably the closest. And again, that is a bicycle playground. Tehachapi is another one that above ground, I would recommend Santa Maria. Again, we're getting kind of south. But yeah, kind of Northern California, we don't have a ton of references, but I can, I can pull a list together for you guys and email over what we have and where you could check them out.
Thanks.
Anna has a question.
Do we have any reference to cities as almost as small as Point Arena that you've produced a park for?
Yeah, absolutely. So none of these on the screen probably fit that, but I'm currently working with a city up in Oregon. They just have a few hundred people in their city and they're kind of in a similar position. They, they don't have a skate park in town, but there's a lot of community interest in one. So they actually did community fundraising and were able to enter into a design contract with American Ramp Company. So right now we are working on their custom skate park design. So we've done community surveys just to gauge the riders, what their skill level is, what they're interested in seeing in a skate park. And so right now we're putting that custom design together and then we'll present it to them with the cost to build that park. And then they're actually going to take that and apply for grants next year to hopefully secure funding for construction. So we work with cities of a few hundred up to hundreds of thousands.
The name of that city?
That is Falls City, Oregon.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, moving on. So I just wanted to talk through some of the skate park options that we have at American Ramp Company. So that photo that you saw of Tehachapi, that was this Pro Series skate park. So this is an all above ground skate park. It's manufactured in our warehouse. It's all steel riding, so it's got a 20-year warranty. It's a powder coated galvanized steel, so really constructed to be out in the elements to take, you know, all four seasons. We build these in Arizona, we build them in Canada, we build them on the coast, we build them in the desert. So they're really designed as a municipal grade skate park. And these are great for communities that maybe they don't have a lot of space and they have an old pad, maybe an old tennis court or an old basketball court that's not getting used and they just want to revamp it. Well, if that's the case, this is a really great option because we can just bring these ramps in and set them on that pad. So the city is really saving money because they're not having to pour that concrete pad. It's already there. And we're just going to utilize that to come up with a great design. And these can range in price from, you know, $50,000 all the way up to half a million dollars. So they're really able to adjust based on the city's, you know, needs and their parameters to build. Next slide. So this is another above ground option. I just wanted to show it to you because if you've ever watched like skating on TV and you've seen the above ground ramps, this is the, the style that they use. So again, it's an all steel framework, but the riding surface is actually something we called like skate-like or ramp armor. So it's actually like a phenolic surface, so compressed paper. This has four by eight sheets that you actually have to rivet down to the framework. So these are a great option for cities that maybe don't see a lot of different types of weather. They don't get a lot of rain, snow. So there's going to be more maintenance with these because you're going to have to replace those sheets. Yeah. What was that?
Oh, we have so much heavy weather here.
Right. So this probably wouldn't be the best option for you, but sometimes skaters specifically request that. So if it's going under a covered area, it might be okay. So those are really our two popular above ground options. If you go to the next slide. And then obviously we have our concrete skate parks. So kind of how I mentioned what we're doing up in Falls City. You know, the first step with the concrete skate park, these are always custom to the space and to the community. So we don't have any, you know, off the shelf designs that we can pop into your location because we really want to design a park that is going to serve your users. We want to know if it's toddlers that are using this or experienced skaters. Do they like the street style skating or more transition style? So the first step with the concrete skate park is the design contract. So what that does is it gets us onsite, lets us look at the location. It lets us engage one-on-one with your community and then set up online surveys to capture all that data. Once we have that information, we're going to take that back to our designers and put together your custom design. But it doesn't stop there. We want to get more feedback. So we're going to present that design to the community and get it, get more. What do you like about this? What do you not like? Let's tweak it, let's revise it and really get you your dream skate park. So then we'll present the final design and with that will be your turnkey quote for us to build that park. So this was really key if the city is looking at grants or fundraising. Most of the time grants want to see the right, we know what project we want. We've done the work. It's a shovel ready project. We just need the green light and funding and we're good to go. So that's typically how our, our concrete skate park process works.
Can I have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Anna.
Is there a, do you have a comparable, do you have a comparable cost to the above ground parks? With the concrete?
Yeah, so right, the above ground parks are typically, you're going to get, I would say at least double the features for your budget. It's not as customized. Some people just prefer the concrete skate parks. So what we like to do, like right, what we want from the city is what is your, your space that you have to work with? What square footage do we have and what is your budget? And then we are going to make sure whatever we design fits within those parameters. So we would like to work with the city during the design phase to, to work out the details on what design we can get you for your budget.
Thank you. I have another question. Is the above ground park as flexible to the terrain as, as the concrete?
Yeah, great question. So because our, our Pro Series ramps, they are all steel. And again, they're galvanized, they're galvanized steel and they're also powder coated. The cool thing about these steel ramps is we actually have a grip texture on the riding surface. So it does, when it gets wet, it doesn't turn into a water slide. It's grippy. So even though it's wet, there's still the texture. We have a park like this across the street from our office and when it's been raining, I've seen guys out there skating with no issues. The other nice thing about that, the only maintenance required is to reapply that, that riding surface paint. And we sell that by the gallon. So it's just a roll-on application that either the maintenance crew or volunteers can go out and just reapply that paint, which we recommend depending on how much use the skate park gets, you know, every two to three years, reapplying that top coat. You're welcome.
Di, can you step to the, and turn on your microphone, please?
Hello? Have you installed any of the above ground parks this close to the ocean?
Yes, we have. And I'm actually working with another city in Oregon who is right on the coastline. And this is the, the preferred above ground series that they are going with as well. So yes, we've done them all across the coast from Florida, the east coast, the west coast, up in Canada. So yep, they are designed and manufactured to take a beating.
And that city, location for the above ground park?
That is Banden, Oregon.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, next slide. So just for my brief conversations, I believe this might be where the proposed skate park location was at one time. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this was just kind of based on what I talked to you about, Barbara.
You're right, that's it.
Okay.
Have a soil study for that location?
Excellent. Yeah, that's, that's great. The more data we can get, all the surveys, we would want that. So we would want a topographical survey and then yeah, if you have geotech reports, utility reports. During the design phase, we would, we would collect all that from the city so that our designers can utilize that while putting your design together. So this is about 6,000 square foot, just on a rough Google estimate here. So if you wanted to do a 6,000 square foot concrete skate park, you would be looking at the 400 to $450,000 range.
Good to know.
Yeah.
And what if you combined it with a pump track that went all around it?
Yeah, so again, that's going to depend on what size track you're wanting. If you were to do like a 10,000 square foot track is kind of our baseline. So a 10,000 square foot track would be again, that 350 to $400,000 range.
Yeah, so the combo of those two would be, yeah, close to a million dollars, right?
In some cases, yes, but I will say if the city says, look Maddie, we only have $500,000 and we want a combination park. That's great. We will get you a combination park for $500,000. So I don't want anyone to get hung up on, oh, we don't have enough money for an awesome park. Yeah, we can get creative. Maybe we can incorporate some of those above ground ramps to maximize your budget. But your, your pump track doesn't have to be 10,000 square foot, right? Again, we want it to serve your community and your needs. So yeah, we have done combination parks for under a million.
Okay. Could you email me some of those parks?
Yeah.
Pictures and locations?
Yes, absolutely.
Do we have a, sort of, talking to you, Mike? Oh, sorry. Do you have a any reference to how to fund insurance for these parks for the cities? Do you have any information about that?
Yeah, so, yeah, so right, we build hundreds of these parks every year. And to my knowledge, there are no insurance restrictions. This just falls under general insurance for the city in most cases. A lot of times cities will just post signs, right? Use it at your own risk. Helmets are required, knee pads are required. But usually they are just open parks from dusk to dawn and I have personally not heard of any issues with those types of facilities.
Any other questions?
I have a question. On the concrete skate parks, how much is precast and how much is cast in place?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't know off the top of my head. A lot of times with precast, right, we're, we're going to see higher costs with, with shipping and freight to get those pieces out to the park. And we're still having to, to do some pour in place in addition to the precast. So I can look into what the cost savings would be, but in most instances, there's not a huge benefit overgoing with precast versus having our crews do it while onsite. Where there might be a benefit to do precast is if you kind of have an existing pad that you want us to cut into and place those precast pieces.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Maddie, I have a question. If, if we would, were to do a concrete skate park and we had in-kind donations from our local concrete company, is that something that you can work with?
Yes. Yes, absolutely. And, and that would all be sorted out during that design phase. So we would have kickoff meetings and then meetings throughout the design with the city to establish, okay, here are the opportunities for in-kind donations. And then that turnkey quote would include that price of, hey, here's how much the skate park costs. Here's how much your in-kind donation is. So here's your total for the park.
Okay, thank you.
Great questions.
All right. Do you have any more slides or can we open it up to the public?
There's just a few more slides, but we'll just flip through them quickly. Again, just want to show you, so this is what our community engagement, community surveys would look like. This kind of, the two photos on the left, that would be our online surveys. You can see this is the one for Falls City, Oregon. So we would want to broadcast that through social media or the city's website and just get everybody involved that we can. We would also have opportunities to bring our skaters out to the community. Julia here in the bottom right photo, she's actually an Olympian skater. So we love giving communities the opportunity to, I skated with an Olympian and she helped work on the design for my skate park. And then the top right is just kind of a photo of one of those in-person community sessions. Next slide. And then you can just flip through these next two. I just wanted to talk about, American Ramp Company is really committed to helping cities come up with a brand for their park. So if this is something the city would want to broadcast and make more of a regional attraction or incorporate into the city's branding and logos, we want to work with the city to incorporate that and make sure the park feels like a part of the community. So you can see here, we've incorporated the colors and the logo into, into the skate park in Fairfax, Virginia.
Okay.
And then these are just some photos of those combination parks you mentioned earlier, Barbara. So the big one here on the left, this is in Avondale, Arizona. The top right, this is in Fort Smith, Arkansas. Then we have, the middle one is in Utah and the bottom one is in New Mexico. And I can send you kind of price and square footage breakdowns for those parks as well.
Thanks, Maddie. One thing I wish you would share with our participants tonight is that really amazing video that you sent me last week about the pump track that's accessible to people on wheelchairs and bikers and skaters and kids and adults. If you could share that link, that would be really fantastic and everybody should take a look at it because it's amazing.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Absolutely. Just really quick. So that was a, an asphalt pump track we did in Port Angeles, Washington. It finished up over the summer. I had the joy of going to the grand opening and, and watching the adaptive use riders utilize that adaptive use track. So there were two tracks at this site, a standard pump track with the higher rollers and berms. And then we also did an adaptive use track. And during the build phase, we had adaptive use riders come and test the track before we put the hard surface down. And so yeah, there's a really great video of the community just sharing how important that track is to those adaptive use riders in the area.
Yeah, it was really just incredible and inspiring. So at this point, I'm going to open the, the presentation up to public comment, questions. If anybody out there would like to ask a question, please do so now by using your raised hand feature. Any comments? Okay. Do we have one? Okay, Isabel.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Um, I just want to say I'm really excited and I hope this can happen as a teacher in the area. I think having more to do in town is, would be really exciting for our youth. And also the more events that have been happening in the community park, I think it's really helping the park be a positive place. And I see a lot less graffiti and trash around the park with the new benches and things. So I think the more life we can bring to the park, it's going to be really, really positive for the youth.
Thanks, Isabel. I agree with you.
Yeah, and that's a great point that Isabel brought up. So during that community engagement, it is so important that the kids and the local users feel involved and have ownership of the park. Because the more say they have, the more pride they will have in that facility, which will lead to self policing and taking care of the park and just taking pride in it and keeping it clean and a nice fun space for everyone to use.
So Maddie, if we were going to continue with American Ramp So Maddie, if we were going to continue with um American Ramp Company, what would our next step be?
Yep, so the first step is that design contract, which starts at $9,000. Um so we would enter into that contract and then immediately we would set up a kickoff meeting uh just to hear the city's goals, uh their requirements, what they're expecting. And then we'd set some dates to get those community surveys out and that in-person engagement.
Great. And how much do we have in our state account, Paul?
Approximately $9,000.
Hey, kismet, right? All right, well, I would like to hear um from our locals, from the public. Um if they support this project and if they would like us to go ahead. Um it's pretty quiet out there. Uh I know I'm stoked about this, but I'd like to know how other people feel. And um I see a few more hands up. Um Billy Orana?
Um, yeah, I definitely support uh having American Ramp Company come in and help do the design of a project. That would be great to see and really exciting.
Thank you, Billy. Peter and Rose?
Did that work?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Uh, very much stoked on that, but I would love to explore a couple other options before we went forward with American Ramp Company personally.
I think that's prudent. Uh, any other, Lanny Bauer, I see you have your hand up.
Hey, um I just want to say that I support a skate park. I, it's been talked about since I moved here a decade ago and I agree that it would be great for the youth in our community. And um, yeah, I, I just think it would be a great addition to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. White, did you have your hand up? Yes.
I do, yeah, I also support it. I think it's a great thing and uh it'll improve that whole area next to the garden. I think it's wonderful to, to see you go ahead with it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Um, so this isn't a voting item. Oh, Jennifer, you have your hand up. Jennifer Smallwood?
Yeah, this Jennifer Smallwood. I, I totally support the idea of a skate park. I think it'd be excellent. Uh my question is, um I mean, you, you've done a little bit of the legwork by having uh these folks show up and do a presentation. And uh you agreed with this for other person that said, oh, it might be prudent to look at other ways to um to approach the park, which I guess means look at other companies and the viability of going with another company. Um and when I hear that, I hear breaks. I hear the skids. I hear, oh yeah, it's one thing to say it at the meeting and then, you know, oh, other stuff comes up and then it dies again. Um, so I just, I'm wondering what, what, who, not even what, who is going to be uh in, you know, making this go forward by finding another company or two to make a presentation? Who, who is going to be the, you know, who's going to take this on? I don't think Paul is going to be doing that. I mean, maybe, maybe this is high on his agenda. I have no idea. Uh we'll find out in January, but um I'm pretty sure the city staff is not like, that's, I don't, I haven't heard that that was like a new project the city staff was taking on. So I, I'm just curious, like, with the suggestion that we look at other companies, who, who would be doing that?
Well, I think it would be me. Um, this is kind of my baby and um I think that it is prudent to look at other companies just because we're using public funds, for one thing. And we need to get um we need to have comparisons. Um, so I think Jennifer, you can count on me to, to do that and not worry about what happens in January. And um I'm gonna go back to Peter and Rose now. You still have your hand up?
Yeah, it's my turn.
Okay, Rose. Now I want everybody to know that Peter and Rose are the brewmasters at the new museum.
Yeah, we just brew, we just brew beer and serve it to you guys. Uh, but my, uh, thank you. My question was just uh with this company that we're currently looking at before the $9,000, are we able to give our input on what we're looking at as far a, as a or maybe after the nine grand, what we're looking at as far as a design for this park? And also, it would obviously have to be concrete because of the elements that we're in. Um, but yeah, just basically would we have input on this project, I guess, before it's even, it's not necessarily this company, but us designing it? And sorry, that was really long.
Speaking to your microphone. Hi, who is us? I don't think I understand your question either.
When, um, Rose, who is us?
Would the community be in charge of designing this project? Or would you be in charge of designing this project and then we would approve it or not?
Well, the whole point of doing public outreach is to have um the community design their project. And um I'm sure that um American Ramp Company is very skilled at listening and incorporating the ideas of the community into the project, because if the community doesn't support the project, it's not going to happen. So um
It's always a good question to ask.
Yeah, well, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So um what I'm hearing is that there is um some support for this project. Um but there has been a request to look at other companies, which I think is something that we need to do, just because it's the right thing to do. And um if anybody has any suggestions about companies they would like me to contact, um feel free to give them to me. I've tried to contact other companies and nobody has ever called me back. So I don't know how hungry people are out there, but um American Ramp Company has been very forthright. And expedient about keeping in touch and I really appreciate that. But if anybody has any other suggestions, please let me know and I will follow up on them. Otherwise, I'm just kind of casting around, just Googling and um that's of limited value really, from what I've found. So I'm just um waiting to get direction from the public. Uh, any other questions, comments before we move on? Uh, we will revisit this um not in January. I will be gone in January. So Anna will be chairing the meeting and I will be in Egypt. But when we come back in February, we will revisit this topic. And Maddie, I want to thank you for attending tonight and making your presentation. And um please give us that link to um the pump track so that everybody can take a look at a really amazing project that you've done. And we'll be in touch.
Awesome. Thanks Barbara. And if anybody has questions, Barbara, you have my contact information. So feel free to share that with everyone and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Have a good evening.
Nice presentation, Maddie. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is item nine, housing. Um, we're going to get a briefing from the Housing Update Team on our LCP amendment, amendment process. Do we have a report, Paul?
We do, and Linda Roofing will be providing that report.
Okay, Linda, welcome.
Linda, you're muted.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Berkey, Vice Mayor Dobbins, members of the council, staff and community. I'm Linda Roofing of North Coast Community Planning and I'll be making the presentation this evening for our Housing Update Team. I want to acknowledge the work that's being performed by uh PlanWest Partners and Hummingbird Consulting in this process. Um, I'm fighting off a cold, so please excuse me for my froggy voice. Um before I launch into the briefing on the Housing Update Process, I want to talk for just a moment about the regional early action planning or REAP grant opportunity that we discussed with the council at your meetings in October and November. We had planned to submit a grant seeking funds for pre-development costs for the city-owned property next to Cypress Meadows development. And as we dug into the grant requirements, we realized that we did not have enough time to submit an application. And after consulting with staff, we concluded that there was no point in assembling an application for a highly competitive grant if we can't check off all of the boxes in terms of the application requirements. So um no REAP grant application for now, but there will be other funding opportunities down the pike and as I'll discuss later in this presentation. I, this will not slow down your process for developing that piece of property. So Gina, if you could put our presentation up and go to the next slide, please. So tonight I'm going to provide a presentation that gives an update on the Community Housing Survey and the Property Owners Survey. Walks you through the restructured table of contents for the city's zoning code. Provides an overview of the revised ADU ordinance and talks through the next steps in the housing update process. I realize that um you've got other items on the agenda, so I'm going to try and like really uh plow through these pretty quickly. Um with that, I just want to say in terms of next steps, I'll set the stage right now by explaining that the Housing Update Team is strongly advocating for the city council to conduct uh like a single topic workshop in January where we can set aside a solid two to three hours to really dig into our recommendations for the Local Coastal Program Amendment so that the council can absorb that information, make some decisions and provide direction to our consulting team so we can keep this process moving along on schedule. Next slide, please. So here's a little update on the Community Housing Survey and the Property Owner Survey. We closed the surveys on November 11th and we could not be more pleased with the results. We received 208 responses to the community survey and 30 responses to the property owner survey. So this is just like a fantastic response rate and these are both statistically significant sample sizes. I also want to note that the surveys included 87 like handwritten comments. And while some are just like a simple thank you or housing's a tough problem to solve, most of the comments that we got were several paragraphs long. So people engaged really deeply with the survey and we are just so grateful for the time that people took to respond and also for the help that we received from SCORE, Action Network and the Mendonoma Health Alliance in helping to get the survey out to folks and results back in. So a big shout out to our community partners. Elias Henderson, who's our survey guy, is parsing the survey data, working on the cross-sectional analyses and really trying to figure out what the data is telling us. He's preparing a comprehensive community outreach report, which will present the survey data and analysis and will also fold in the results of our other community outreach efforts, which have included interviews with council members, key property owners and other community stakeholders. So our plan is to present the complete community outreach report at the housing workshop, which we're hoping will be in January. Next slide, please. So the next item I want to review this evening is our recommended overhaul of the organization of your zoning code. Attachment A to the staff report um in your packet presents the proposed reorganized table of contents. This reorganization is needed in order to integrate the new and revised sections of the code that we're preparing with the housing update. The biggest change is that there's currently 34 sections of your zoning ordinance that are lumped together in this catch-all chapter that's titled General Provisions and Exceptions. And we've relocated those into three separate chapters. And then we've added three new articles in the Procedures and Administrative Chapter. So I want to scroll through the table of contents quickly to point out what has been moved and why. And then we're not going to go through this again until we're ready to just have you um kind of give your stamp of approval on the reorganized zoning code. Um, so next slide, please Gina. So there's no, this is just from top to bottom, there's no major changes in um the first chapter other than renumbering. Uh, we moved the Definitions Chapter to the end of the code and again with chapter 18.15, there's no major changes. Next slide, please. Um, no changes to the structure of chapter 18.15 other than the renumbering. We'll be proposed, proposing revisions to individual check sections and adding tables to clarify um the development standards. And as I mentioned, we're eliminating chapter 18.25, General Provisions and Exceptions, and then all of its contents are relocated to other sections. Next slide, please. So we've added a new chapter entitled General Development Standards and a new chapter entitled Standards for Specific Uses. And on this slide, you can see sections that were formerly in the General Provisions and Exceptions Chapter. Next slide. So as you can see at the top of this slide, the new ADU and JADU regulations will reside in the Standards for Specific Land Uses Chapter. And then we have a new chapter entitled Environmental and Historic Resources Protection. And this contains all of the regulations pertaining to environmental and historic protection that are currently um just lumped in the General Provisions and Exception Chapter. So there'll be some further modifications to the sections um in this chapter to relocate definitions to the Definitions Chapter and Procedures to the Procedures and Administration Chapter. Next slide. Um, so the Procedures and Administration Chapter currently exists, but we've added a new Article One for the regulations pertaining to non-conforming uses, structures and lots. And we also um noted that there are a few items that are just like missing from your code, like regulations for conditional use permits, variances and amendments to planning permits. So we'll draft some regulations to address these comments and they'll go into the Procedures and Administration Chapter. Next slide. Um, minor changes on this page, uh though, I'll note that this is where the streamlined administrative process for ADUs will reside. Next slide. So we created a new article um for appeals and we've also created a new article for density bonus and affordable housing incentives regulations, which we'll be drafting for you. And next slide. Okay, so lastly, we've moved the definitions to the end of the code and will integrate all of the supplementary definitions that are currently included in, in appendix into this Definitions Chapter. Okay, so that's an overview of the reorganized zoning code. This is a work in progress and it's likely to evolve. But our recommendation is that when the city submits its revised ADU ordinance, um this, the reorganization of the code should be submitted as an LCP amendment as well because it provides the superstructure into which the new regulations are woven. Um, so I'm going to just move on to modifications to the ADU ordinance and then maybe we can pause after that. And uh I can take any questions that you have. So as a bit of background, the city's current LCP allows for second residential units, which we now call ADUs or accessory dwelling units. However, the state has passed a bunch of legislation pertaining to ADUs and the city's regulations need to be updated to, at a minimum, conform to the new ADU laws. Two years ago, the city council approved a new ADU ordinance and in 2021, it was submitted to the Coastal Commission as an LCP amendment for their review and eventual certification. In response, the city received a lengthy letter. received a lengthy letter with a lot of questions and requests for information from the coastal commission. So at that point, our team was hired to take the ADU ordinance to the finish line, among other tasks. We met with the coastal commission in September to review their comments on the twenty twenty ADU ordinance. After that meeting, it became clear that rather than revising the ordinance that was approved by the council in twenty twenty, it would be easier, cleaner, more effective to kind of start over. And so, so we did, we kind of, we redrafted it. The primary reason for this is that the twenty twenty ordinance was set up as a standalone ordinance and instead of being integrated into the city's zoning code. And so it was hard to kind of pull it apart and figure out where it would go into the code. And furthermore, um, it changes to state ADU laws occurred after the council's review and there are additional changes that are necessary to respond to coastal commission comments and concerns. So I think we're on the right path with the new um, structure of the ordinance. I want to emphasize that we've kept a lot of the verge the verbiage that was in the original twenty twenty ordinance. And we've retained the same permitting framework. But there's a lot there to review and to talk through, and I'm not proposing that we do that this evening. But rather, I'd like to leave you with the preliminary draft of the revised ADU ordinance that's included as attachment B to your packet. And let's take a deeper dive into it in January. I do want to mention that we reviewed the new ADU regulations that you'll see in attachment B with the coastal commission staff last month. And they were receptive to the changes. Um, they also indicated that rather than starting at square one with a new LCP amendment for the revised ADU ordinance, the council could submit the new regulations as a modification to the original LCP application. So this is super helpful and I would definitely recommend that you proceed in that matter, manner. Um, we received additional comments from the coastal commission a couple of days ago. Um, those have not been responded to or integrated into the uh, revised ordinance yet. But when we come back to you in January, um, we'll bring an updated version of the ordinance. So it's not, it it won't be identical to what's before you this evening. But if at this point you have any questions, comments or suggestions on the ADU ordinance that was provided in your packet or on the zoning code reorganization that I just quickly ran you through, um, I'd be happy to answer those. And I think maybe we should just pause here. Um, and I can take any questions or comments before moving on to the next slide, which is just the next steps in the process.
Um, yeah, Linda, uh, I have a question about restructuring the zoning code. Um, the second bullet point is possible changes to highway commercial and multifamily, family residential zoning. Are we talking about specific changes or are we talking about general changes?
Oh, well, those will be specific changes. So I'm not sure which bullet point you're looking at, but um, that is part of the housing update processes. We will be bringing back to the council. Um, you know, specific recommendations for changes to highway commercial and multifamily um, zoning. So and if you choose to go forward with those, those would get integrated into the code as well.
Okay, um, also, um, another thing was updates per state housing laws, including modifications to address. One thing is employee housing act compliance. So these are standards for maintenance use and occupancy for five or more employees. Um, so is that relevant to our new project on School Street?
Hmm, that's a good question. And you know, I don't have an answer off the top of my head on that Barbara, but we, we can come back with that at the housing workshop and let you know.
Yeah, I thought I just put it out there. I don't need a response right away. And then um, under modifications to the accessory dwelling unit ordinance, there's a few bullet points, um, four, five of them. And one of them just doesn't make any sense to me. Um, it says, the revised ADU regulations address updated to state ADU laws that were enacted after the twenty twenty ADU ordinance was prepared. I just don't understand what that sentence means.
Yeah, I, I think there's a typo in that. So I think it, it should read addresses updates to the state ADU law.
Maybe it's an updates, not updated.
Exactly. So yeah, there were new ADU laws that came online in January of twenty twenty-one. And so those weren't incorporated into the ordinance that was prepared in twenty twenty. And so as we revise it, we'll just, we'll make sure that it's consistent with the current laws.
Okay. Um, one last question, going back to restructuring the zoning code. Modified regulations to implement state legislation for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. Are the modified regulations we're talking about? Um, the one that allows a minor subdivision of a normal city lot to have four units on it, like the Helmer proposal on School Street. Is that the kind of regulation we're talking about?
Um.
High regulations to implement state legislations for ADUs and JADUs.
Yeah, so um, the Helmer project, my understanding is, or the, the project that you just approved.
Right.
Is that that um, was developed as a two parcel subdivision with a a residential unit and an accessory or and an accessory dwelling unit on each parcel, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that is consistent with state led state laws with the new ADU legislation.
Okay, that's perfect. That's just what I needed to know. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Linda? Okay.
Okay. So Gina, can you put the presentation up and we'll go to the next slide, please? So in terms of next steps, we've made a lot of progress and there's still quite a bit of work remaining to be done. We're working to complete the community outreach report that I talked about earlier. We'll be responding to the coastal commission feedback that we received just the other day on the revised ADU regulations. And we'll also be preparing updated and revised um, LCP land use plan policies relating to ADUs that are a necessary part of that LCP amendment application. And so as we discussed in at the community workshop in October. And as Barbara just mentioned, we're preparing options and recommendations for the council's consideration regarding modifications to the highway commercial and multifamily residential zoning designations. And we're also preparing options and recommendations for simplifying and streamlining the city's permitting procedures. Um, and last but not least, we'll provide options and recommendations to the council for moving forward with multifamily housing on the city-owned property um, adjacent to the Cypress Meadows project. And so all of that is what we're proposing to come back to you with in January um, for, at a public workshop. Uh, and, and we'll also have an answer on the employee housing question that uh, Mayor Berkey raised. So um, we, our plan is to do some special community outreach in advance of the workshop to make sure that people are aware, are aware of all the items that will be discussed. Um, and you know, to make sure that people have time to prepare and to participate. So next slide, please. So this slide just lists a number of ways that folks can stay in touch and keep informed about the important work that the city's doing to update its housing policies and regulations. Um, and for the new council members, I would just welcome if you want to call me. Um, I'm happy to talk to you and try and get you up to speed with what we're doing and where we're at in the process. Uh, so that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Linda.
For any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any other questions for Linda? From the public or from the guys? Lonnie, Lonnie Bauer?
Hey Linda, I was just wondering if you could show us that slide again, right before the contact information? I just wanted to write something down.
Right, that's the next steps. There you go.
And then Jennifer, uh, Smallwood, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I wanted to know, I uh, see that you're talking about streamlining permit process, but is there a going to be, a lot, a lot of cities are streamlining particularly the ADU permitting process. They're, they're having uh, pre-made plans, architectural plans drawn up, different things to uh, really uh, streamline the process specifically for ADUs. And I wonder if that's part of this whole thing.
That is, and thank you for bringing that up. So so when I have the streamlining, the process on this slide that's showing now, this is like looking at all of your permitting procedures. And then the ADU ordinance that we've prepared already includes um, a streamlined process. You know, basically what we've set up um, is, you know, opportunities for lots of ADUs to be exempted from the requirement to get a coastal development permit. And if they do get a need a coastal permit for that to be done through a ministerial process, which is like an administrative process without a public hearing. So that is in itself streamlined. But we are also planning to put together what I call an ADU toolbox, which would have the pre-approved second residential unit plans. Um, the city currently has um, plans that were prepared by SHN for one unit and we are working to get permission from the city of Fort Bragg and the city of Ukiah and potentially the county of Mendocino to use their pre-approved plans as well. Um, so that property owners would have the opportunity to you, to obtain like full building plans for a variety of designs of accessory dwelling units. The ADU toolkit will also have information about um, financing options. And as you um, may recall, the council directed that the permanent local housing allocation funds that are available to the city um, over the next several years be directed to grants for ADUs and also grants for housing, for rehabilitation of housing units. So um, you know, so we'll provide information about how to apply for those grants and also other funding that might be available.
Great. Well, Linda, this has been amazing. You have so much work under your belt already, but so much more to go. And I'm really sorry I'm going to miss the January meeting because it sounds really exciting. And um, I'll just keep in touch and maybe I can even zoom in, who knows? From the pyramids.
Oh, don't do that.
Yeah, oh, gosh, it just sounds so amazing. So thanks for all your hard work, Linda, and we'll look forward to seeing you next month.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Mm-hmm. Okay, item ten is our public hearing for tonight. Um, this is a coastal development permit number three dash twenty twenty-two. Um, this is a public hearing um, for coastal development permit application number twenty twenty dash zero three. And this project is located at the community park at two thirty Main Street. Assessor parcel number is zero two seven dash one 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 dash zero three four and zero two seven dash one 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 dash zero three five. And the owner is the city of Point Arena. Um, city manager, has proper notice of the hearing and continuations been made?
It has. Uh, it was, excuse me, noticed in the ICO at the post office, the library and city hall, and also emailed to our email list.
Thank you. Uh, council members, can I get a motion for proper notice? Thank you, Anna.
Seconded.
Thank you, council member Kugel. That's a motion from Vice Mayor Gobbins and a second from Council Member Kugel. Um, could I get a vote, please, Gina?
You may. Council member Doyle.
Yeah, yes.
Council member Hanson.
Yes.
Council member Kugel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gobbins.
Yes.
And Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Okay, tonight's public hearing process will be as follows. Planning staff will review the staff report on the project. The council will ask questions of staff. The public hearing will be open for public comments and questions. Public hearing will be closed. The staff will address any remaining issues. The council will discuss the item further and take action. Um, would planning staff please review the main points of the staff report and their recommendations?
All right.
Be Mr. Scott Perkins.
Thank you, Mayor Berkey. I appreciate it. And uh, thank you, council, new council members. Look forward to working with you. Um, this project, as you introduced, uh, Mayor Berkey is in the city park on the west side of Main Street. Um, I was hoping Gina, if it's possible for me to share my screen, I could kind of walk through the project particulars. It might be easier than trying to describe it. Uh, let's see.
You have access, yes.
Cool. All right. So if you're looking at four photos, and I'm hoping you are, uh, this is the park. Um, here's the aerial photograph of the existing park today. And the first part of the project would be about a twelve hundred foot um, expansion of the park in this direction on the west side of it to add um, a swing set uh, in the photos to get your orientation. This little bend in the existing wall is right here at this corner of the park. So in this picture, we're kind of standing where the expansion would be. In this picture, it would be on the left side, sort of where these benches are. And this picture on the less left side um, off of the screen. Um, I'm going to share another picture. It's a little bit more fine tuned. Um, let's see. All right, here we go. So here again is the aerial of the park. This is an actual schematic of how that um, expansion would look. This is again, that kind of jog in the corner of the existing wall right here. So you can see the addition to the playground here. This is um, kind of a relief drawing, a rendering of what the grading would look like. Here's the existing um, sidewalk or the sidewalk that's here that would connect to the expansion of the park. Um, this wall here would be here. And at the very end of it, this is the existing height of the wall. So it would match here. It would come around to the outside, down and around and tie into here where this is. The highest part of the exposed wall right here would be about thirty inches. Um, I meant to bring it up in the last pictures, but the existing walls that are here along the edge of the playground and around here are between twenty-four and thirty inches. Um, so this would be about the maximum height, this corner uh, that the existing wall is now, and that'd be kind of located out here. Um, and just risking maybe being a little bit too in-depth, but just making sure that we understand it. Um, you know, here's the hillside where that wall would go, the tallest part of the wall would be here. Um, you know, as you come around. So that is the playground portion of the project. Um, now the second part uh, is the drainage improvements that take place um, south of that in the park. And to get our orientation here, here's the existing footpath through the park and the community garden is over here. This is the footbridge that you walk over. Um, right now, what happens when we get storms and rain is the rain kind of comes through this uh, former swale that is degraded here. Uh, rain comes on the hillside and everything kind of sheet flows to the south down this hill and across the existing walkway. Uh, there you can kind of see if you can read the topo lines, there wants to be a drainage um, system here where the water wants to go, but it has been clogged up and is instead going down the hill. So this project would um, dig a small swale here next to the footpath so the water has a place to go and would feed into this existing. and would feed into this existing wetland, um, which is what a wetland wants, is to have that drainage coming into it. And then it would come out into this area, which would be the new um, and kind of reestablish drainage channel coming under the footpath. Um, here's some pictures of what the channels would look like. This is the small one, kind of by the nursery. That'd be on the north side of the path, and here's the larger swell, um, that would be the north and south area coming through here. Um, so I wanted to share those plans and drawings before I get into the meat and potatoes of the presentation because as I was reading it to myself, it didn't make sense unless I was looking at the picture. So um, that's the project. Uh, this project would be funded by, I believe, a state parks grant. Um, that I think you guys were actually talking about a little bit earlier when you were talking about the skate park. Uh, if you went through the staff report, there's not a lot of major issues with this project. The main review um, was uh, the environmentally sensitive habitat areas and the natural resources in the park. Um, mostly because, you know, since it is a drainage project, we're dealing with a wetland. Uh, there was a wetland delineation in a botanical survey um, that was developed in advance of the project design that was shared with fish and wildlife. Um, there are some mitigation measures recommended to protect uh, the wetland um, ESHA features, and there's also purple needle grass, which is a protected habitat on the kind of west side of the park. Um, sort of where the skate park wants to go, so consider that in the future. Um, the mitigation measures are mostly avoidance measures, meaning temporary construction fencing around the needle grass and the wetlands, so the construction crews stay out of it. Um, the mitigation measures also require that uh, this fencing um, shows up on our construction plans and the construction plans have already been updated to, to reflect uh, the recommended mitigations. Um, where possible, uh, the project does stay at least fifty feet away from ESHA, which is the required buffer distance in the code. Um, where fifty feet cannot uh, be met, it's because the work is within an ESHA or next to an ESHA because it requires um, that location for the work. So um, some of this work has to be right next to wetland because it is a drainage restoration project, so by nature it kind of has to be there. Um, otherwise, uh, it meets uh, the code requirements for protection of ESHA and also meets the other myriad code requirements for setbacks and building heights and flood plains. Um, again, if you look at the staff report, you'll see there's no real issues there. So with the recommended uh, mitigation measures, um, the project appears to be consistent with the city code. Uh, and we recommend approving um, the coastal development permit, so we can get the project out to bid construction. Um, I think uh, Paul is available too with questions if it has to do with funding and kind of that side of things. But if it's about the park design or permitting, I'll do my best to answer any questions you have.
Um, Scott, I have a question about the drainage. Um, so there's going to be uh, a drainage facility or ditch or whatever north of the footpath. And um, would that be paved?
No.
Is that a paved ditch? It's just a ditch?
Correct, yeah, it's just a dug ditch, yep.
Okay, and then how does it get across the footpath to go into the wet, the wetlands part?
Sure, yeah, I didn't point it out on the plans. Um, I'll have it right here, so it'll be easier to share it and to describe it. Um, right here is um, a trench uh, drain that would go underneath the footpath. If this is where you're talking about, I think. So this would go underneath the footpath in this location.
Okay, uh, so it's like, um, what do you call those drainage?
Like a French drain, maybe?
A French drain or whatever. Yeah, and then um, the larger um, swale drainage in the wetland area, that's just natural as well, right? It's not paved?
Correct, yeah, it would be dug to kind of perform the way it used to. It's been clogged up. If you walk over the bridge now, you'll see water is not going to move under there, even in a rain event. So it's to kind of reestablish the channel is there. There's no hard shapes or paving or anything. Um, it's all dug, and then per the, the botanical reports, recommendation would be um, reseeded with natural vegetation, kind of hydro seeded with um, native seed mixes is usually what we see um, in those kinds of, kinds of applications.
Okay, uh, and then I had a question about the placement of the um, swing set. Have we made a determination as to what kind of surface it's going to be placed on?
Yeah, the plans are calling for wood chips. Um, I don't, I have, if my screen is still sharing, looks like it is. Um, here is the design or the spec of the swing set. Um, and the base of this, of the playground would be twelve inches of wood chips on top of um, in some cases along the walls, because the wall has a footing, there's going to be six inches of soil and then twelve inches of wood chips. So that even if the wood chips got like scraped away, you know, nobody would fall and kind of skin themselves on the, the concrete of that footing. Um, but it's going to be twelve feet of, or I'm sorry, twelve inches of wood chips throughout, and in some places, six inches of dirt over concrete footings around the edge. And that's shown a little bit here. This is the twelve inch layer of wood chips, like up against the wall.
Okay, and how, how often do those need to be replaced?
Oh, it really depends. I wonder if Paul or anybody has a sense of, of, you know, how quickly you're looking at that now. I mean, it depends on use, it depends on drainage. I would like to think that um, since we're going to be regrading this portion of the site, the, the drainage is going to be, you know, better than existing or better than what's there now, which will hopefully make the wood chips last a little bit longer. I know they also degrade over time, like even if they're not flowing away. Um, I'm not sure what, what you guys are seeing now for your, your maintenance of the wood chips you have there now, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we generally, um, well, before COVID, we would uh, partner with the charter school and have a large load of chips delivered to the city, split between us and the charter school uh, once a year. So we replenish the chips that are currently at the playground basically once a year.
Okay, where do the chips come from? Where do the chips come from?
There's a firm in Santa Rosa that we've contracted with before that deliver them out here. They're spec, they're specialized wood chips for playgrounds, so they're not just your regular wood chips. They're kind of buffed down and so you don't impale yourself.
Yeah, thank you. Any other question? I have one more question. Is there any kind of base that goes underneath the wood chips, uh, a compaction? Or anything like that to mitigate the gopher activity?
Gotcha. I'm looking at the plans. There is, you know, six inches of compacted fill subgrade. Um, I'm not going to make a promise that's, that's going to keep gophers out.
Right, no.
I have a question back to the, to the drainage and the uh, that drainage that is uh, below the culvert at the upper asphalt path and, and under the bridge. Um, that uh, that clogged drainage seemed to be causing a, a spring to pop up and what is designated to be the dog park area, is, is that being considered in uh, in improving that drainage?
Sure, we talked to our biologist about this a little bit, because you know, one of his concerns was this wet area here is possibly a result of the sheet flowing um, conditions kind of coming down the hill. And there was a little bit of concern that if you're moving some of that into this, you might be depleting this wetland. Um, it's not shown here on the plans, but in his report, it looks like kind of the principal place that the wetland wants to be is down here. There is a drain inlet that this would feed into, um, and that this is kind of a condition because this was filled up. There's a chance over time that, you know, as this gets established, and if we come in for a dog park or you know, something in this location and get it resuraveled, this might change. Um, and it might look different in the future, you know, once we establish this drainage channel. Um, but I'm, I'm not sure what it's going to do, um, you know, how much smaller it would get.
It's just a matter of observation that as that uh, as the uh, the rains happen and that uh, the water flows to a point disappears, and then the spring pops up. I don't know if that's a condition by the, that was created by the work that was done before, but it uh, it seems to be causal. The, you know, I, I'm not sure about that. Uh, but uh, I've got a question here about the boundary at this, at the lower part of this. Is that, is that just a definition of the, the area that the scope of work is being considered? Or is that jog that drops down into the uh, to the drainage there? Is that uh, is, is that the boundary of the, of the park or?
I think this is a parcel boundary. I'd have to check um, to confirm that. You're talking about this line right here at the bottom?
Uh, yes.
Okay, let me check. Um, be hang tight just a moment. I do think it's a parcel boundary, but I don't want to tell you that and be wrong, so let me check.
Yeah, so basically, that's the cities, but it's currently being utilized by somebody else, or is that uh? I just looks, looks like where the uh, yeah, it looks like their, their garden space there. Looks like it's fenced and part of it, and I'm not sure if I'm not reading it correctly from the map here, but it just looks that way.
Yeah, that's been an ongoing issue at that location that we haven't addressed as much as we should.
Okay.
Um, the, I do know the drain inlet is on our property. Um, but further to the south, it turns into the Suddus property.
Yeah, and I'd say we did not do a, a boundary survey um, for these plans. So this is, you know, probably dropped in from GIS or from parcel layers. So, you know, this is, you know, there's no monument right here. I'm not going to, you know, um, say that's a survey corner. Right.
Okay, thank you.
Scott, that um, large swale, that's um, wetlands that goes down to, yeah, the boundary line or whatever that line is. What happens after that? Where does the water go?
Yeah, there's, there's a drainage inlet right here that it would feed to, and then it goes to the city's um, you know, drainage system. My guess is to the wastewater plant. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, was my kind of working um, assumption.
Okay.
I think it passes under Port, Port Road, and I think it surfaces again be, beyond that on to uh, Jerry Carlson's place, and anyway, it pops back up on the other side of, of Iverson and onto the Saldani property and that area. Anyway, it's a, it's a water course that continues all the way from underneath Highway One, going up Riverside seems to be its origin. And then pops out at various places there, but it seems to be a continuous water course.
Okay, any other questions from the council before I open this to the public? Okay, um, I'm going to open um, this portion of the meeting to the public for any comments or questions for Scott. If you have any, Jennifer Smallwood, you've got your hand up?
Can you, can you say what the time is?
Oh, and the time is uh, it looks like seven fifty-five, right? Okay, so opening it to public comment at seven fifty-five? Jennifer?
Okay, um, yeah, what, once the material comes out of the swale, where, where is that material going? Um, and how, do we know how that drainage got clogged? And how, what you're, we're supposed to be doing with the swale is going to keep it from getting clogged? Is there a maintenance program going to be put together so that it doesn't just get clogged? And then it, you know, just reverts to what it's doing right now? Um, and we haven't actually talked about the swing set, but the swing size that's up there in the in the plans, looks like it's uh, kind of a, it's like eight feet tall. Is that the actual swing set right there, or is it going to be bigger? I mean, it's, seems like a little small, short thing, like tiny. Um, so yeah, I've
Are you dissing our swing set?
Yeah, I mean, it looks like a backyard swing set. I mean, I just, eight feet tall by two swings seems like not much of a I mean, I don't know, I was, I was hoping for like a real swing set that, you know, would be for like I mean, people are talking about using the park for the youth and everything. It's like youths, youths get bigger when they're in high school and stuff, and they want to get on a swing. It'd be, I think it'd be so cool to have a swing set that was actually big enough for, you know, adults to get on and like for everybody to use as opposed to just little, little guys. That's just my two cents worth. I don't know what the deal is for, you know, actually putting in a bigger swing set. And um, also, I would like to request that the council members get closer to the mic than just like holler or something, because when you go from, from the different people, it's like you can barely hear anything. Um, so, and that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Thank you, Jennifer.
Yeah, so just commenting on the size of the swing set. We had originally envisioned a four swing swing set, but we were limited in that location by the geography and the topography. And so we made the decision to make it a two swing swing set. And I will say, um, it is a substantial sized swing set. Um, I've seen it. We have it actually, um, and it's not a teeny tiny swing set. It's not a kid's swing set. It's, it's available for all people to use.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks for defending our swing set. Okay, anybody else got your hand raised? Not seeing any? Okay, any other um, comments from staff? I'm going to close the public part of the meeting, seeing nobody else, and the time is eight o'clock. Thank you. Any other comments from staff?
Um.
Or council members?
Uh, if, this is in reference to Jennifer's question about the uh, about the water, the, the water course. And in two thousand and six, there was a uh, planning and technical assistance grant for, for the park. And uh, and the uh, that water course was, there was a conversation about daylighting it and creating uh, it to uh, to bring it into the water course that it was, was presumed to, to be at one time. And uh, and I think it's worth a conversation going forward and probably more studies and what have you. But uh, but it takes a lot of the, the area that's, that's unusable to the public at this point and, and makes an interesting feature um, you know, for the park and the surrounding area, so.
Jim, what is daylighting?
It, it is, uh, it is, is turning it into a, to like a, a water chorus, like a creek or something, something. Uh, yeah, it, it turns it into uh, a water course that runs on the surface rather than underground.
So a surface feature then?
Yes, yes.
Okay, anybody else?
I think that would be a great addition. Daylighting, I think that's worth looking at.
Mm-hmm. Okay, at this point, it's time for council discussion and possible actions. So any final comments or questions? Can I get a motion to approve or deny this permit, or perhaps to modify? Or to continue it to another date?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
I'll second. Okay, uh, a motion to approve from Council Member Kugel and a second from Vice Mayor Dobbins. Um, could I get a roll call vote, please Gina?
You may. Um, Council Member Doyle.
Yes.
Council Member Hanson.
Yes.
Council Member Kugel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dobbins.
Yes.
Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Wonderful. Bring on that swing set.
Whatever size.
Yeah. Uh, okay. Item eleven, action items and resolutions. All items under this section are for discussion and possible action. Um, item A is to award a contract for sea level rise study to ESA associates. Can I get a staff report?
Yes, Scott Perkins has been working on this valiantly and will explain the rationale for choosing this firm.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, uh, Mayor Berkey. So this is the third time we've brought um, in, in an item like, on this topic to you, to a council meeting. Um, the first was to let the city council know that there was funding available at the Coastal Commission um, for sea level rise study. Uh, and council gave direction um, to pursue that funding, and we got a one hundred thousand dollar grant um, to hire a firm to do a sea level rise study and vulnerability assessment for Arena Cove. Um, most recently, we brought uh, a copy of this RFP and requested scope of work um, to council before we released it. Um, and then after uh, council reviewed that, we did release the RFP. Um, and we received proposals from four different firms um, in response to the RFP. Uh, on November twenty-ninth, uh, an RFP review committee um, of members that were appointed by council at the last meeting on this topic um, met to discuss the proposals. Those were um, Council Member Waterman, uh, Billy Arana from the Cove stewards, uh, City Manager Paul Anderson, and me were the four that reviewed the proposals. Um, after the discussion, the committee ranked ESA's proposal as the top ranked of the four. Um, I think that, uh, well, Billy's here and Paul's here, and I think Richie's around, so they can weigh in as well. But the main takeaway is that, um, you know, that I had from my notes from our conversation was the ESA's proposal um, included the most was that ESA's proposal included the most, that most in-depth analysis of Arena Creek. I don't know if you recall, but our proposal or request for proposals asked that firms not only look at sea level rise impacts from the ocean, but also climate change impacts from the creek and how the creek interfaces with the ocean during storm events and can cause issues for Arena Cove. And ESA's proposal had the most, most analysis of the creek of the firms that submitted proposals for the project. We also liked that the consultant included a site visit during the storm event to see, you know, what happens in person. The other four, or the other three did not, you know, they did claim to be making site visits, but the group did like that they mentioned that they'd come out during a storm event. They are the closest of the four, so that's easier for them to do, to come out kind of on short notice and, and look at a storm. Their experience in their proposal on working with coastal communities on sea level rise analyses was, was robust. And they have a proven track record of working on reports that jurisdictions use and rely upon for Coastal Commission permitting. I actually called the principal planner for the city of Eureka, who worked with ESA and this team in the past. And she actually used to be a coastal analyst for the Coastal Commission. So she understood quite a bit about what the Coastal Commission's looking for and what cities need. And she definitely had great things to say about them to kind of back up the information that was in their proposal. The other three firms that submitted, which were Moffett and Nickel, a team of Integral and EMC Planning Group, and Schaff and Wheeler, their proposals were quality and they could have all likely probably done the work as well. But the group did think that ESA's proposal, you know, was the best of the four, offered the most for the money. And we think it'd be a good opportunity to start building a relationship with ESA and the Cove and with this foundational study. Because we know there'll be more after that and kind of see where it goes. So we were encouraged that we had four firms that were interested, four qualified firms. So as projects continue in the Cove, hopefully, we've got people that are interested in helping us out with it. So what's in front of you tonight is a draft of, or I'm sorry, a proposed professional service agreement with ESA. And with council's blessing, we would execute this contract and turn them loose to start working on the sea level rise analysis and vulnerability assessment. I know that we've got, I think, one person from ESA in the Zoom lobby, and I think somebody might be in the room as well. So I can answer questions and ESA can as well.
Okay, I've got a question. Under Task Seven, Policy Input and Recommendations, it says this task does not entail responses to comments by the Coastal Commission. This seems like a really big thing because the Coastal Commission often makes comments that aren't really just comments. They're things you have to do. So I was wondering if ESA isn't going to respond to the Coastal Commission, does that mean the city will?
Yeah, and actually, our grant request with the Coastal Commission had $85,000 for this study. And it's for a technical report for a consultant to put together. The city is going to amend the community health and safety element of the LCP based on the recommendations and findings of the report that ESA or whichever consultant might be generates. So part of our funding request was that staff would be working on the resulting LCP amendment from this study. If we were to hire a consultant to both process that LCP amendment and do the technical study, there's probably not enough funding in the grant to do both. Just to kind of jog everybody's memory from our grant application, one of our concerns was in order to qualify for the funding, you had to have an LCP amendment as a component of your project. And we're already well underway with an LCP amendment for housing consistency of the state code. We talked about that earlier tonight. So I, I, Paul and I talked to the Coastal Commission staff and said, hey, you know, we can't do a whole overhaul of our LCP. We're in the middle of one right now. We don't want separate ones tracking together. So the compromise that we made was instead of doing an LCP amendment, that would be kind of a big undertaking. The LCP amendment that we proposed to do as part of our grant was to just make some small policy changes in the community health and safety element so that we would qualify for the funding. But we would have this sea level rise analysis and vulnerability assessment in our hands that we could use for future projects in Arena Cove. So I'm not concerned by that statement in their proposal. We, we did not ask for these consultants to do back and forth with the Coastal Commission. And that's not what the Coastal Commission grant included as, as what the consultant would do. Because we did kind of downsize what we're, what our, our LCP amendment project is with the Coastal Commission. So it should be more, much more straightforward than, for example, what Linda was talking about tonight.
Okay, sounds good. And then another thing under Task Seven, Assumptions. It says ESA will be available to city staff in a limited manner to provide clarification, discussion, and other input. I'm just wondering how limited is limited manner?
Sure, so I'm catching up. What was the, the item number that you pulled up? I wanna make sure I have it right.
Task Seven, Policy Input and Recommendations. If you go, there's Task Seven Deliverables, Task Seven Assumptions, and the third bullet point is ESA will be available to city staff in a limited manner to provide.
Got it. Yeah, and, and that kind of goes back to that other comment. You know, once they make their recommendations for our LCP amendment, that's where the scope of work for, for what we put out in our RFP basically stops and says, okay, now the city's gonna work with the Coastal Commission on the Community Health and Safety Element Amendment. We actually talked to ESA between their proposal and the scope of work that you're looking at and actually got them to add that statement that you're looking at. Because they were kind of, as we requested, our RFP did say, you know, once you make your recommendations, you know, you're finished. But we did say, you know, it'd be great if, you know, you didn't just totally ghost us if things came up and we had some questions about your work. So they did put that in there. I, you know, it does stay limited. Me working for a consulting firm, I, I totally understand they don't wanna get roped into, you know, 30 hours of meetings that they haven't put in their budget. But we did wanna make sure that, you know, once they did make their recommendations, if we had some questions, that they would be available to kind of, you know, clarify or help with their technical report. You know, if, if we do have questions after the fact.
Great. I'm glad you got that in there. Anybody else? Any questions? Yeah, yeah. Do you wanna say anything? Go ahead and identify yourself. Thanks for waiting. You've been here all night.
Oh, yeah. It's exciting. Exciting stuff here. I'm actually excited to be here. My name is Louis White. I'm with Civil Engineer with ESA, specializing in coastal engineering. Been there almost 16 years. And I work out of our Petaluma office right now. And, yeah, so our team is excited to do this work if it's approved. And, you know, we're, we're interested in coastal adaptation and vulnerability. Our firm has done a lot of erosion mapping in response to sea level rise. We are the first firm to actually prove to map erosion hazards in response to sea level rise on the whole coast of California with the Pacific Institute in 2009. And so that modeling framework, we've adapted over time. And when I'm using and comparing to other available information and looking at wave run-up studies. And, you know, we're surfers, so we, we really are drawn to places with waves and, and complex shorelines and understand, I grew up in Half Moon Bay. It's also a marine independent, marine-dependent economy there. And so understanding the importance of the facilities in the coast and how threatened are they? I actually have a copy of an old book, The Great Storm of 1983, a collection of photographs. And, you know, it, it's just pretty amazing to see the power of the ocean here and to help understand what, you know, the study's gonna look at vulnerability. So we're gonna look at what's the existing vulnerability of extreme storms and wave events on the coast here relative to the shore and the facilities. And then with sea level rise, how are those hazards gonna change over time? So we anticipate updating maps of hazard zones, kind of like what a FEMA map might look like, but including sea level rise to help establish those areas where there's the high-velocity hazard zones of waves. And then also looking at the creek. Our group is going to do a very high-level analysis, looking at the global circulation model, influences of climate change on precipitation, and how that water gets routed down through the watershed and what kind of stream flow changes there might be during peak events. And then how those flood hazards with the fluvial processes interact with the coastal processes, resulting in a single set of hazard maps that can inform some policies in terms of the, the safety element. So that's the whole overarching. And then we have planners in our group too, and former Coastal Commission staff that we've included in our team for this. So I think we're all, you know, excited to do this. And, yeah, any other technical questions, I'm, I'm all ears.
Well, it sounds like you're gonna do exactly what we need. And I wanted to ask you, you said you're in the office in Petaluma?
Yes.
Where else does ESA have offices?
We have offices all over the West Coast and in Florida. So our, you know, main offices are in San Francisco and Oakland. And then Petaluma, Sacramento, Portland, Oregon, Seattle, Washington, and several in Southern California, LA, San Diego, Camarillo, and others.
So Petaluma would be the closest one for our storm event that you're gonna make a site visit for?
So.
You'll probably wanna make a lot of site visits, actually.
Yeah.
Since you like to surf.
Yeah, I, I took the opportunity to come up here for this, you know, just to, you know, get to lay of the land and just meet everybody and, you know, just, I had the night free, so I decided to go for it. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, for Scott, excuse me. For Scott and Paul, I know there's been talk of, of flood, Arena Creek flood studies. And it sounds like that this is dovetails nicely into, into getting funding for doing that. Anything you have to say about that, future possibility of the flood studies?
Well, I think we were hoping that one of the goals of this study was to lay the groundwork for future studies. So a more, so this would lay the groundwork for a more comprehensive study of the whole watershed and mediation of that if needed. And I, I think the point of that being that with this study, we may be able to leverage money for other studies. Because we will have already started the process and have an idea of where we're going.
Okay, so the recommendation tonight is to approve the contract with Environmental Science Associates. Would anybody like to propose a motion? They need to see right into your microphone. Move it closer to you, because you're getting lots of complaints. Okay, I propose that we move ahead on this project. That we approve the contract?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'd like a second then.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice Mayor Anna Dobbins and a second from Councilmember Kugel. Gina, may I get a roll call vote?
You may. Councilmember Doyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Wait a second, Gina, I'm sorry. I preempted you there, sorry. Public comment? Yeah, okay, public, are you there? Would anybody like to make a comment on the motion? Seeing none? Okay, then Gina, take it away.
All right. Councilmember Doyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dobbins?
Yes.
Mayor Berkey?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Gina. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 11B, Councilmember Boards and Commission Appointments. This is gonna be fun, you know, because there's gonna be like some mad competition for these appointments. I, I know what I want and I'm not budging, so. We have a bunch of different ones, and I'm looking for my sheet. Here we go. We have the Mendocino Transfer Authority Board of Directors, known as the MTA. And it's been vacant for a while. It used to be Eric Dahlhoff, but since he's left the board, we haven't had anyone there. It's a two-year, a two-year term, meeting on the fourth Wednesday of the month. Now, where do they meet, Paul? Because some people have issues.
Well, they meet in Ukiah, but they've been meeting virtually, but I'm not sure how much longer they will be able to do that.
I think everybody has to go back to in-person meetings with their boards in February. Is that correct? Okay, so that's one that needs to meet. Next is the Economic Development and Finance Corporation, the EFDC, which is my freaking favorite. It's a two-year term. It meets in Ukiah the second Thursday of every month at two o'clock. And I would really like to retain this seat, but I'm just putting that out there. There's the Mendocino Council of Governments, known as AMCO. Scott Ignacio was our director for the longest time, it seems like, and Anna is alternate. It's a two-year term, meeting the first Monday of the month. And where do they meet? In Ukiah as well. They do meet at 1:30 PM, so those are the right times, just so you know.
Thank you.
Our LAPCO, Local Agency Formation Commission, was also Scott Ignacio. It's a four-year term, meeting the first Monday of the month at 9:00 AM. And I believe that's in Ukiah, is that correct? All right.
And I would just say on that one, I'm not, I, I believe we are rotated out for that, for this term.
Yeah.
Because Scott left the board, so we're no longer in the mix.
Right, so we don't need someone to be on that, although it's pretty, I mean, I think it's a pretty interesting gig. It's not for everyone. Next is the League of California Cities, Redwood Empire Division. I've been on this forever. I love it. Don't wanna give it up. It's a two-year term. Richard Wasserman was my second on that, and he's gone. Meeting quarterly or more. It seems like quarterly is pretty accurate, although we do have special conventions as well a couple times a year. So it's more like six times a year. And that can be all over Northern California. Those meetings are all over the place. We, our last one was in Pointe Rita. It was really amazing. Then we have CIRA, which is our Risk Sharing Authority. And Paul Anderson is our delegate. And do we need to have two people on that, or can we swing it with one?
Well, they generally want an alternate, and traditionally, it's been staff. So Richard was the director and I was his alternate, and now I'm the director and somebody would be my alternate. Usually it's a staff member, so, yeah.
She's our only other staff member. Hey, Gina, you're nominated! All right, twice annually in Sacramento. And then Sonoma Clean Power has been vacant for a long time as well. But are we on it this year?
That's a good question. And we, Jonathan was on it for a period of time, and he left the council, and then it rotated to another city.
Right, but I'm wondering if we're back?
I don't know, and the city select committee would know, would be the people that would decide that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so on the select committee that you would sit on as the mayor, that's one of the entities that they would figure out who's gonna be. Because it's, I think there are two city reps, but there's three cities in Mendocino County. So it again rotates like LAPCO does.
Okay.
And I think we're probably up for a rotation at this point.
It seems like it, because we've been off it for a long time. But that's a pretty fascinating seat to hold. I mean, Sonoma Clean Power does so much here. And seeing as we're shooting to totally redo this VFW hall with a nice fat grant, having Sonoma Clean Power on our side and maybe some solar upgrades or anything else that would be energy-saving would be really great. So if one of us sat on Sonoma Clean Power, it would really behoove us. Then there's the Mendocino County City Selection Committee, which the mayor sits on, and that would be me now. How often does that meet? And is it all over the place, or do they meet in one place?
It's always in Ukiah. It's always in Ukiah.
Oh, it's in Ukiah? Okay, great, that works for me. So, um, we'll just go down the list, and I'm going to ask for people to volunteer for these seats. Is there any interest in the Mendocino Transit Authority Board of Directors? Nobody volunteers, that's not what's going to happen. You're going to get a sign. Wow, how often does they meet? Uh, fourth Wednesday of the month, every month, at one thirty. In Ukiah. Right. And Mendocino Transit Authority has provided public transit systems for Mendocino County, encompassing about twenty-eight hundred square miles, including Mendocino Coast and inland communities established in nineteen seventy-six, under a JPA agreement between the County of Mendocino, the City of Fort Bragg, the City of Point Arena, the City of Ukiah, and the City of Ullots. So, um, if you have any interest in transportation or in improving transportation to the coast, this is your baby.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we have a, uh, we have an MTA driver, Robert, who, uh, that lives down, uh, on Lake Street, and can, can a non-council member serve as a rep?
Actually, a non-council never can, but I don't think he would qualify if he works for MTA.
Okay.
And-
In the past, we had Lloyd Cross as our representative, even though he wasn't on the council for a number of years, and then he left and Eric took over. I'll just say, MTA is really important on the coast because it is our own transportation, public transportation that is available, and as we know, there's two, I believe, two routes, one going north and one going south, all the way to San Rosa, so those are, those are important for certain members of our community to be able to get to appointments and that type of thing.
Eric, express any interest in continuing? And Lloyd?
No. I'm going to table that, we'll come back to it. Let's go on to something we can do. Economic Development and Financing Corporation, I would love to stay on, I'm on the Executive Committee there, so I feel like I have to stay on. Um, and, uh, Anna, are you happy being the alternate?
Yeah, I mean, I never miss a meeting, so you never have to go. That's why I was going to say yes. I had, I think I've got two.
Yeah, and they are still Zooming, but in February it will be, but January I'll be gone, so you'll be my alternate, so you could Zoom in.
But I also, but I'm considering some other things.
Oh, so maybe you don't want to be talking?
Maybe not.
Okay, because I- Right, I understand, so is there anybody who'd like to be my alternate from the EDFC?
I've, I've done it.
You've done it.
I've done it before, and I, and I've been your alternate, but I've, I've, I have been a representative to EDFC, and I'd be willing to, to do that.
Okay, great. Have you got that down, Paul? Okay, wonderful. Um, MCOT, Regional Transportation Planning Agency, MCOT disperses state and federal funds for transportation, so you get to work with money, and provides regional planning. MCOT is responsible for preparing regional trans, the regional transportation plan. MCOT is overseen by a board consisting of two Mendocino County Supervisors, a countywide public appointee, and one council member from each of the four incorporated cities, including Point Arena. A representative of Caltrans serves on the Policy Advisory Committee with the seven directors.
I'll just say again, this is a very important, uh, position for the city of Point Arena, we have, MCOT has helped us over the last five years phenomenally with the amount of road construction that we've had in town, they have helped meet our match for the state grant funding, they were also who, um, developed and submitted our Mill Street application that was successful, uh, that was basically all them, so, we, we have a longstanding, uh, relationship with them that's really important to the city's bottom line.
Yeah, and you get to meet, um, supervisors from Mendocino Board of Supervision, that's always a good thing.
Super, super important.
Yeah, so Jeff?
Richie did that, right?
Be our director?
Sure.
Wonderful, okay, and an alternate, right now it's you, Anna.
Yeah.
Okay, Anna will be our alternate. Wonderful, thank you very much.
I, I have a question, is Howard, does Shields still, uh, the roads, so that, is he still? Yeah, I, I, that's what, what I was wondering, but, uh, yeah, there's some, there's some important things that you might represent the city through the, through them, that's the stuff.
I'll need someone to bring me up to speed, maybe Richie.
Scott could do it, yeah, Scott's been on MCOT a long time.
Okay. The city's got to fill in a few things.
Okay, LAFCO, Local Agency Formation Commission, created by State Law and Sixty-three to provide assistance to local agencies in overseeing jurisdictional boundary changes. It's a seven-member commission comprised of two city council members, two county supervisor members, two special district members, and one public member. Um, only two cities are represented and alternating. So, we're still on it because Scott would have been there for a while more, right? Do we just take this seat?
Right, but it was also at the end of the term, so they were going to, like, Scott was actually going to become the director, like, the main person, uh, because the main person there now, Tony Orth, didn't get re-elected. But since Scott's leaving, um, I, I believe, you know, three city reps, but only two at a time, so I believe we're out of the loop on it this time, but I can verify that.
Okay, okay. So, LAFCO is all about verifying boundaries for special districts, making sure they're legal, um, what else does LAFCO do?
They do the municipal services.
Annexations, I know. It is, right.
So, let me put that up.
Well, I'll verify that.
He's going to verify, you might be on it. I'm remembering you said too bad.
Corporate Water District is, uh, looking at, um, popping for, uh, water, so.
Okay, League of California Cities, Redwood Empire Division, I want to keep this, but I do need somebody to, I like to be legislative, but I can be business, I don't care, um, but I do need someone to take the other seat, we get two people on this.
I'll volunteer.
Great, thank you, Dan. All right, you can have fun. And then Sonoma Clean Power?
Well, I, yeah, I don't have anything else going, and I would like to do Sonoma Clean Power if, uh, if we have a seat currently on that.
Okay, Paul will let me know. So, everybody's taken now, except for MTA, we need somebody to do MTA. And, um, fourth Wednesday of the month, one thirty.
I'll volunteer.
Great, thank you, Dan.
That's, that's a good call.
Until February, yeah, it's only for another month. And you said they meet in Ukiah?
I think they rotate occasionally, but generally in Ukiah.
Yeah. All right, we did it. So, let's put that, okay, so, Paul, do you want to reiterate, Lawrence, who's Jane Watt?
All right, I have, uh, Dan Doyle for Mendocino Transit Authority, have Barbara Berkey as the director, Jim Kugel is the alternate for EDFC, uh, I have Jeff Hanson as the director for Mendocino Council of Governments with Anna as the alternate, I have nobody for LAFCO at this time, Barbara Berkey for Legislative, and Dan Doyle for Business and Reversed as alternates, and I have Jim, I trust he's interested in Sonoma Clean Power if that is available this time.
Okay, um, now, I see we have a bunch of resolutions in here.
Right, what I, um, since we've already decided who's going where, what I would do is simply approve the resolutions as assigned.
Okay.
And then we will update the resolution with that, we pass them on to the various entities.
All right.
Make a motion that we do that.
Easy peasy. Can I get a second? Anna, second, so Councilmember Kugel makes a motion to approve all the resolutions dealing with appointments to committees, or not committees, but to, um, commission appointments. Um, Vice Mayor Dobbins, uh, seconds that, that motion, and can I get a roll call vote?
To get some public comment.
Yes. Oh, is there any public comment? I'm sorry, I always forget that. I figured nobody really cares about this stuff, except me. No public comment? Okay, let's get our roll call vote.
You may. Uh, Councilmember Dobbins, um, excuse me, Doyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Kugel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dobbins.
Yes.
And Mayor Berkey.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great, thank you. Um, item twelve is our city manager and city attorney report, shall we do ladies first?
It's a short one, I have nothing to report.
Whoa, fantastic, okay, and how about you, Paul, city manager?
Uh, the only thing I want to report is we, um, did receive a, so, the broadband, middle mile project is occurring, uh, the state is funding, um, fiber optic connection all the way from the southern border to the northern border, and they have, um, the state has come to us to request, uh, the fiber optic will go through Highway One through the city. Um, they've requested a CDP, but what we have, uh, Scott and I have talked with them about is they would prefer to consolidate CDP in Mendocino County, so that they don't have to get Fort Bragg's approval, and then the county's approval, and the city's approval. If the cities are willing to do that, which I think is probably a good idea, we'll be bringing something back at the January meeting to, um, consolidate ourselves into the overall permit, so that we don't have to actually do the permitting ourselves, but we'll be a part of it. So, we'll be bringing that in on a-
I'm just believing that fiber optic is one of the areas.
So, they're running fiber optic, um, all up the coast, and so, in Point Arena, it would run from the south end of town all the way to the north end of town on Highway One.
That's great.
Yeah, so we'll bring that-
I'll believe it when I see it.
I thought on the, on the, on the conduit, it provided, oh, so there's an abandoned conduit at certain Main Street. I'm an abandoned conduit on Main Street.
Okay, um, item thirteen, future agenda items happening in the next forty-five days. A is potential housing workshop on January tenth, which we heard about from Linda Ruffin. B is our next regular meeting on January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Whoa, I might actually make it, you guys? Yeah, okay, C is a Point Arena Peer Condition Assessment Report. Hmm, and D is a mid-year budget review, so that is a big meeting, y'all, be prepared. Um, so, um, I am going to adjourn us to closed session. Um, would anybody like to take a five-minute break, or should we just go right into it? Okay, a break, five-minute break, so the time is eight-thirty-five, we'll come back at eight-forty for a closed session, um, we'll have our conference with legal counsel, and then we'll come back and report out when that closed session is finished. All right, so I'm going to adjourn us for five minutes, starting now.